Good evening and thank you for joining us. This is a call to order of the City of Aspen City Council Regular Meeting for April 11, 2023. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Sounds like it's not on. Counselor Hohenstein.
Present.
Counselor Mazero.
You can't hear me.
Skippy, are you getting our audio?
I don't know.
Doesn't seem like it.
Okay.
Yeah. Skippy, can you hear us? Roll call, are you here?
Are you present?
I am present.
Thank you.
So present.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
I'm here as well. This evening, of course, we have a healthy agenda. Could even say we have two of them. Because the way we proceed this evening is we start our meeting with seated council members, and we have some business to take care of there, and then we will make a changeover to new council members and the mayor with a swearing in. So what we're going to do is we are going to take citizen comment here on the first meeting, but we're going to reserve our comments till the end of business so that we have an opportunity for some ceremony. So with that, I'm going to start off with a proclamation. And before I read the proclamation, I want to just read a couple of facts and figures for you. Colorado has the nation's highest performing state donor registry with 67% of driver license ID card applicants signing up to be an organ and tissue donor. The United States officially achieved 1 million organ transplants, including more than 42,000 performed just last year. That's a historic high for the nation. It's a testament to the lifesaving work being done daily by Donor Alliance and all donor procurement organizations across America. Donor Alliance donor service area covers 6.3 million residents, covers 184,000 square miles, and that includes all of Colorado and most of Wyoming. There has been a dramatic 56% decrease in deaths on the Colorado organ transplant waitlist in the past five years. A lot of this is really good news, but part of it is also for those of you that don't participate in donating organs, we look for your attention and we ask for your help in this issue as well. With that, that brings me to our proclamation this evening.
If you don't mind.
This is a proclamation of the City of Aspen, Colorado. Whereas April is National Donate Life Month, which raises awareness about organ, eye, and tissue donation and encourages Americans to register as donors; whereas one donor can save up to eight lives through organ donation and save and heal more than 75 lives through tissue donation; whereas the Chris Clug Foundation, a national nonprofit located here in Aspen, supports the efforts of Donor Alliance by promoting organ, eye, and tissue donation through inspiration, education, and registration; whereas during 2022, the Chris Clug Foundation inspired and educated over half a million individuals nationwide; and whereas National Donate Life Month and the Chris Clug Foundation honor those that have saved lives through the gift of donation; and whereas April 2023 is the 20th anniversary of National Donate Life Month, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor, city council, and the citizens of the City of Aspen hereby recognize the month of April 2023 as National Donate Life Month. We'll take a round of applause for that. And here to accept our proclamation recognition, a recognition, is Chris Clug. Chris, if you don't mind, would you come up for us?
Yeah, come right up here, if you will.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, I appreciate it. That's awesome. Thank you. Thanks, John. Yeah.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Wonderful.
You got to talk into one of the microphones, though. Microphone in front of that desk, maybe?
Okay. Lean those towards you, maybe?
Yeah, blood light on. There you go.
Bend down a little bit. Does that work okay? Well, first of all, I just want to say thanks to city council and to everyone here. I'll be brief. I know you guys have a lot of business tonight. I'm told that politics can be a little divisive and a little polarizing these days. As a snowboarder, I wouldn't know anything about that. But this is something we can all celebrate. As Mayor Torrey said, 67% donor designation rate in Colorado, number one in the nation. When we started this, I was on a transplant waiting list for about six years, had a lifesaving liver transplant 22 years ago, very grateful to still be here. And when I started this, those numbers were very low. They're still in the teens in some places, so we can be very proud at 67% that number one in the nation. And I'd like to think that our small foundation headquartered at the Red Brick had something to do with that, and this community, I know, has had something to do with this. I've seen almost every one of you climbing Aspen Mountain at night at Summit for Life. And just want to say thanks to everyone here and to our council for helping celebrate National Donate Life Month in April. Our mantra at CKF, at Chris Clug Foundation, is "Live life, give life." And that's my life's mission and what our foundation is all about. Our work is not done yet. We have about 1,500 people in the state of Colorado waiting for solid organ transplants, just like me 22 years ago, and about 104,000 people across the country. So our work is not done. We will continue spreading the word and encouraging everyone we come in contact with to, as I said, live life, give life, and also inspire those that are going through the transplant process, just like me 22 years ago. So thanks for supporting us and celebrating Donate Life Month with us. Thank you.
Have you seen Nicole real quickly? Nicole, will you put your signature on like that?
Oh, yes. Got to document this.
Yeah, we'd like to.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. That'll bring us to citizens' comments and petitions. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on items that are not on our agenda for public comment. And we do ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes to give everybody an equal and opportune time to speak. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening?
What makes you think that?
Go right ahead. If you'll introduce yourself for the record.
Can you hear me?
You are on.
I am. My name is Ruth Harrison, for those of you who didn't know, and for those of you who do know, it's still Ruth Harrison. This is not why I'm here, but, you know, somebody needs to stop the construction workers from idling their trucks for an hour at a time in the morning. They get to work early and they idle them, and there's so much idling of cars in this town, it's just unbelievable. Nobody does anything about it, and they're going to continue to do it, and anything you do about climate change, it's kind of like counteracted by those people. So there you go. I'm here to thank Rachel Richards for her 30 years of service to this community, the hard work she's put in. I know it's a ton of work. For the hard work she's put in with APSHA and everything she has done for this town, I don't think we'll ever see another city council person like Rachel. It's unbelievable the amount of work it is, and all I can say is thank you for all that you have done for me and this community.
Thank you, Ruth.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Thank you again to Skippy and to Rachel for your years of service. Patty Kravitz with Centennial Homeowners Association. Last council meeting, Mayor Torrey said that you, the council, are limited in being able to talk with us because of the litigation. I'd like to remind you that we had a stay on the litigation for more than three years in the hopes that we could come to a cooperative solution, but our offers to have discussions were shut down. Instead, the city held secret meetings to come up with a proposal without our input. Once the proposal came to us, we responded with points that would make it more acceptable to the homeowners, but most were not agreed to. We requested a separate meeting to discuss the facts of the case, and what we presented was dismissed as inaccurate, and we were shut down. After the homeowners voted overwhelmingly to reject the city's proposal, the HOA offered one last opportunity for a conversation before we moved to lift the stay on the litigation. And the response from the city's attorney, Josh Marks, was, quote, "The city has not changed its position on Centennial's settlement concept." We don't know what they were talking about. "The most recent data that the city floated did not gain enough traction to move forward. The city council is open to hearing any new and different settlement concepts, but I think we likely need to get this back on the litigation track," end quote. It doesn't sound like the city was trying to avoid litigation or was truly open to settlement concepts from Centennial, or we wouldn't have been pushed back to litigation. I suppose it comes down to accountability and responsibility, but it's a shame that we have to go to litigation because we can't have conversation and cooperation. We are willing to discuss this matter at any time. With a satisfactory resolution, the litigation can be withdrawn. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Other members of the public this evening? Ed, come on up.
I'll be a little quicker this time. Ed Cross regarding Centennial. Again, thanks to
Highest performing state donor registry with sixty-seven percent of driver license, ID card applicants signing up to be an organ and tissue donor. The United States officially achieved one million organ transplants, including more than forty-two thousand performed just last year. That's a historic high for the nation. It's a testament to the lifesaving work being done daily by Donor Alliance and all donor procurement organizations across America. Donor Alliance, donor service area covers six point three million residents, covers one hundred and eighty-four thousand square miles, and that includes all of Colorado and most of Wyoming. There has been a dramatic fifty-six percent decrease in deaths on the Colorado organ transplant waitlist in the past five years. A lot of this is really good news, but part of it is also, for those of you that don't participate in donating organs, we look for your attention and we ask for your help in this issue as well. With that, that brings me to our proclamation this evening.
Can I have your pardon?
Yeah, if you don't mind. This is a proclamation of the city of Aspen, Colorado. Whereas April is National Donate Life Month, which raises awareness about organ, eye, and tissue donation, and encourages Americans to register as donors. Whereas one donor can save up to eight lives through organ donation and save and heal more than seventy-five lives through tissue donation. Whereas the Chris Klug Foundation, a national nonprofit located here in Aspen, supports the efforts of Donor Alliance by promoting organ, eye, and tissue donation through inspiration, education, and registration. Whereas during 2022, the Chris Klug Foundation inspired and educated over half a million individuals nationwide. And whereas National Donate Life Month and the Chris Klug Foundation honor those that have saved lives through the gift of donation. And whereas April 2023 is the twentieth anniversary of National Donate Life Month, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor, city council, and the citizens of the city of Aspen hereby recognize the month of April 2023 as National Donate Life Month. We'll take a round of applause for that. And here to accept our proclamation recognition, uh, recognition is Chris Klug. Chris, if you don't mind, would you come up for us?
Yeah.
Yeah, come right up here, Brian, if you will.
Thanks, you guys. Yeah, I appreciate it. That's awesome. Thank you. Thanks, John. Yeah. Thanks, Brian.
You ready to hear it for me? Thank you.
Thanks. If you don't mind, if you'd say a couple words.
I'd love to. Yeah.
You got to talk into one of the microphones, though.
I do, sure.
Microphone in front of that desk, maybe?
Okay. Yep, lean those towards you, maybe.
Yeah, blood light on. There you go.
I'll bend down a little bit. Does that work okay?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thanks to city council and to everyone here. I'll be brief. I know you guys have a lot of business tonight. I'm told that politics can be a little divisive and a little polarizing these days. As a snowboarder, I wouldn't know anything about that. But this is something we can all celebrate. As Mayor Torrey said, sixty-seven percent donor designation rate in Colorado, number one in the nation. When we started this, I was on a transplant waiting list for about six years, had a lifesaving liver transplant twenty-two years ago, very grateful to still be here. And when I started this, those numbers were very low. They're still in the teens in some places, so we can be very proud at sixty-seven percent that number one in the nation. And I'd like to think that our small foundation headquartered at the Red Brick had something to do with that, and this community, I know, has had something to do with this. I've seen almost every one of you climbing Aspen Mountain at night at Summit for Life. And just want to say thanks to everyone here and to our council for helping celebrate National Donate Life Month in April. Our mantra at CKF, at Chris Klug Foundation, is live life, give life. And that's my life's mission and what our foundation is all about. Our work is not done yet. We have about fifteen hundred people in the state of Colorado waiting for solid organ transplants, just like me twenty-two years ago, and about a hundred and four thousand people across the country. So our work is not done. We will continue spreading the word and encouraging everyone we come in contact with to, as I said, live life, give life, and also inspire those that are going through the transplant process, just like me twenty-two years ago. So thanks for supporting us and celebrating Donate Life Month with us. Thank you. You see Nicole real quickly? Nicole, will you put your signature on like that?
Oh, yes.
Got to document this.
Yeah, we'd like to.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. That'll bring us to citizens' comments and petitions. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on items that are not on our agenda for public comment. And we do ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes to give everybody an equal and opportune time to speak. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening?
What makes you think that?
Go right ahead. If you'll introduce yourself for the record.
Can you hear me?
You are on.
I am. My name is Ruth Harrison, for those of you who didn't know, and for those of you who do know, it's still Ruth Harrison. This is not why I'm here, but, you know, somebody needs to stop the construction workers from idling their trucks for an hour at a time in the morning. They get to work early and they idle them. And there's so much idling of cars in this town, it's just, it's unbelievable. Nobody does anything about it, and they're going to continue to do it. And anything you do about climate change, it's kind of like counteracted by those people. So there you go. I'm here to thank Rachel Richards for her thirty years of services to this community, the hard work she's put in. I know it's a ton of work. For the hard work she's put in with APSHA and everything she has done for this town, I don't think we'll ever see another city council person like Rachel. It's unbelievable, the amount of work it is, and all I can say is, thank you for all that you have done for me and this community.
Thank you, Ruth.
You're welcome.
Thank you again to Skippy and to Rachel for your years of service. Patty Kravitz with Centennial Homeowners Association. Last council meeting, Mayor Torrey said that you, the council, are limited in being able to talk with us because of the litigation. I'd like to remind you that we had a stay on the litigation for more than three years in the hopes that we could come to a cooperative solution. But our offers to have discussions were shot down. Instead, the city held secret meetings to come up with a proposal without our input. Once the proposal came to us, we responded with points that would make it more acceptable to the homeowners, but most were not agreed to. We requested a separate meeting to discuss the facts of the case, and what we presented was dismissed as inaccurate, and we were shut down. After the homeowners voted overwhelmingly to reject the city's proposal, the HOA offered one last opportunity for a conversation before we moved to lift the stay on the litigation. And the response from the city's attorney, Josh Marks, was, quote, "The city has not changed its position on Centennial's settlement concept." We don't know what they were talking about. "The most recent data that the city floated did not gain enough traction to move forward. The city council is open to hearing any new and different settlement concepts, but I think we likely need to get this back on the litigation track," end quote. It doesn't sound like the city was trying to avoid litigation or was truly open to settlement concepts from Centennial, or we wouldn't have been pushed back to litigation. I suppose it comes down to accountability and responsibility. But it's a shame that we have to go to litigation because we can't have conversation and cooperation. We are willing to discuss this matter at any time. With a satisfactory resolution, the litigation can be withdrawn. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Other members of the public this evening? Ed, come on up.
I'll be a little quicker this time. Ed Cross regarding Centennial. Again, thanks to Rachel and Skippy on their service to the community, and especially to Chris Klug and his family on that wonderful presentation and proclamation this evening. I've written a poem. It's called "The Riddle of Centennial," and here it goes. Built on an EPA site, desert design and funding light. What could go wrong, right? Centennial at Smuggler Mountain space, now the center of a legal case. Clad in superior redwood siding, beneath which rot and mold are hiding. A capital problem with funding need. The property encumbered with a restrictive deed. Centennial owners, hardworking and local, time to get loud and vocal. City council as too, newly elected, sympathetic to our plight, it is suspected. Please fully review the Centennial debacle. Surely a worthy problem to tackle. Get the real truth, not the lies and the drivel. You need the facts to solve this riddle. Thank you.
Do you want to comment?
Yeah, I do have a comment. And first, that's great poetry. I really like that. I appreciate that. You know, at the last meeting, I have kind of repeatedly asked why you've not talked to Picken County, who designed and selected the builder and developed that project. It was in the county. And I was told it was something about, oh, the city took over the deed restrictions in ninety-four and ninety-five during the settlement offer. And that's not true. That is just another misstatement of fact that goes along with the Centennial story. APSHA owns the deed restrictions, as they own them for all the properties, and APSHA is run by the city and the county. And you have now appeared in front of us, I don't know, six, eight times? I don't know what. But I understand you've dropped the county from the lawsuit altogether. The people who built Centennial, the people who designed Centennial, the people who approved the design and the shoddy construction, and you've never once, not once, in this whole three-month period, gone to them. And I think that that is something you should do. I think that's something you owe all the taxpayers, instead of just trying to blame this and pin this on the city, because they were the ones who built that project. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Members of the public, comments this evening? I'm looking online as well.
Mick has his hand.
Mick, come on up.
Those new knees are working pretty good.
Aircraft parts, Rachel. I want to say a few things. I want to congratulate the winners and leave them to think about the old adage, be careful what you ask for. It's a hard job. I hope that you put a lot of energy into it like Rachel has and like Skippy did. The, there are a lot of things I could say about Rachel, but to list all of her accomplishments would eat up most of the time at the meeting. And I don't want to do that. I've done it before. It's almost impossible to walk around Aspen or visualize Aspen without seeing, feeling, or being in touch with something Rachel created or helped create. There's Smuggler Mountain. She spearheaded the drive to purchase that. There's Burlingame. She was a leader in that campaign. In the county, there's the Health and Human Services Fund, which is, it was, unique to Colorado counties in that we taxed ourselves to help those who need a little more. We did that voluntarily. We didn't rely on the state to provide the money. There are other housing projects. There is the Yellow Brick, and there is the Red Brick. Rachel and I are two of the three people who were sued when that passed by three votes back in the day. And ask yourself for a minute, not just what you see, but what you would have seen, had that property gone on the free market and been yet another block of high-end luxury houses, for which there, of course, is a great need, not here, but in the world. So I want to thank Rachel, and I'll cut list the short, cut short the list of improvements, and just say, over the past thirty years, since Rachel started out her first campaign posing in front of a delivery truck where she was delivering brochures for Don Shealy and worked on and off within the communities, in the community's service as an elected official, she has come a long way from where she was, and she has taken the city with her. So I want to thank her for her service. I want to thank Skippy for an imaginative campaign. You don't win them all. But we progress as a democracy and as a city when diverse ideas come forward, some ideas of which Skippy introduced may be on the agenda as consensus items a decade or two hence. So Rachel, thank you for your service. Skippy, thank you for your run for office and your service. And I wish good luck to this council going forward with all that it has to do, because in the city of Aspen, if somebody isn't doing it, Aspen will, and then the rest will follow. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mick.
Thank you, Mick.
Other members of the public this evening for public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council table. Council, like I said, we're going to take our comments at the end of this meeting, of this part of the meeting. So with that...
Agenda amendments.
Yeah, before I get there, you know, I have, I have one comment that I just wanted to make it this time so that I'm not having it later. Yesterday, I was proud to be in attendance for the memorial service of Marion Glee Headley Melville. And I just wanted to bring this up at this time to honor and remember an amazing Aspen community member. The service yesterday at Crossroads Church was overflowing into two other rooms, just a tremendous outpouring of love and respect. And I ran into a friend there who said something to the effect that Marion did enough volunteer work for a dozen regular Aspenites, and just saying that she gave all of herself and her soul as her family to this community. So I just once again wanted to recognize Marion Glee Headley Melville for her contributions to Aspen.
Thanks, sir.
With that, we look for agenda amendments, and like I said, we moved some comments to the end, but nonetheless, other than that, managers' comments at this time?
On behalf of all of staff, Skippy and Rachel, I want you to know how much we greatly appreciate your service, and of course, we know how to find you. So, once you're a council member, you're always a council member, and we do come back to you and ask for your sage advice. So thank you for your service. And then, council, reigning council members, I have comments for, under the new council, to provide you some updates about some things upcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. That gives us an opportunity here for quick board reports.
I have none.
Board reports?
We had the APSHA meeting last week on Wednesday, and I did not bring the agenda with me, but we have passed the rightsizing proposal, overall guidelines, and are going to continue to seek approval and support for the idea of the emergency grant program of up to five thousand dollars per unit, more interior, not capital reserve type of issues that they are going to be presenting to the county. And the other item from APSHA is that we're still short a citizen alternate, and so potentially reviewing or advertising for new citizen input would be helpful.
Thank you. Anything this evening, Ward?
Just a quick update. There, I was in a subcommittee meeting on planning the strategic plan for RAFTA for the next three years, and I think that retreat, RAFTA retreat will be in August.
And RAFTA meeting this Thursday.
RAFTA meeting this Thursday, and then there was a core strategic meeting, too. I might be getting the two confused, but the core is for the next three years, and that meeting will be coming up, I think, before August. The RAFTA is in August, I think.
Thank you. Skippy, I'm going to look over to you. Hopefully, you don't have any board reports.
Yeah, I do not, thanks, though.
Right on. Thank you. With that, it'll bring us to our consent calendar this evening. Consent calendar tonight is made up of Resolution Number Forty-four, that's adoption of the Picken County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Resolution Number Forty-seven, Burlingame Early Childhood Education Center Contract Change Order. Resolution Number Fifty, Rio Grande Building Restaurant Space Lease Agreement. Resolution Fifty-One, Contract with ERO Resources Corp. for Lumber Yard Affordable Housing Development. Resolution Fifty-Two, Contract with Horux Engineering for Lumber Yard Affordable Housing Development. Resolution Number Fifty-Three, The City of Aspen Ruadi and Maroon Creek Hydroelectric Facilities Annual Operation and Maintenance Contract. Resolution Fifty-Seven, Approving the City Attorney Contract Amendment. And we have draft minutes from February twenty-eighth, 2023. Are there any items requested for pulling and discussion? I will be pulling Number Forty-seven. That's a follow-up vote from our last meeting. Any other items?
Just a brief discussion. Brief discussion on the Ruadi hydro.
All righty. Why don't we go ahead and start with Resolution Number Forty-seven? I don't think there's outstanding questions on this item. It was that we were missing a council member on our last meeting, so we continue this to be able to be considered at this meeting tonight. With that, I would actually take a motion for Resolution Number Forty-seven.
I would move to approve Resolution Number Forty-seven.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution Forty-seven, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hoenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazzaro?
No.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a no as well. Thank you for that. I appreciate you, counsel. That'll bring us to Resolution Number Fifty-three. We have some questions or discussion around City of Aspen Ruadi and Maroon Creek Hydroelectric Facilities Annual Operation and Maintenance Contract.
I just want to go through some of the numbers. I had an exercise this morning insured with staff. The, how, how does fourteen million kilowatt-hours relate to how many homes it supplies for electricity? And by my calculations, it's about nine hundred and seventy-two homes on an average two thousand square foot home, and that could be, that may not be as many because of our elevation and increased electrical needs. I tried to do, tried to jump into this to get an idea of what percentage this contract was of the revenue, and it's difficult because the revenue isn't what we charge for electricity, but I came up with about a fourteen percent, and I think that, I asked if that was in the range across the industry, if fourteen percent for operations and maintenance contract was proper, because it just seemed, it was about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars a year, and it seemed high to me. When I started doing all the numbers and came up with over a million dollars of revenue from the hydro at Ruadi, the number of homes that it supplied electricity for, and it's clean, clean energy, and I was assured by staff during the course of the day that my ballpark numbers were pretty close and that we, from Ruadi, we're getting enough electricity for over nine hundred and seventy-two thousand square foot homes. So I just wanted to bring that up so it didn't escape the attention of the rest of the community. And I thank you, gentlemen, for replying to my, my, I asked for your, I apologize for getting into the weeds on it, but I think I answered my own questions as I was in it, but I needed confirmation, so thank you.
Yeah, Ward, thanks for those questions. I'd just add that Ruadi is about twenty-five percent or a quarter of Aspen's renewable energy portfolio, and I would also point out that this contract not only is operations and maintenance for the Ruadi facility, but also the Maroon Creek. So that fourteen percent is probably a little bit closer to ten percent of annual expenditures.
And I think, Tyler, there was, there's some training in there for city staff so that in the future, this may be even less.
Correct. The intention here is to get city staff trained up for that operational aspect of the Ruadi and Maroon Creek facilities, and over the course of a few-year period, that's actually going to lower our overall costs for both projects.
Yeah, every time I look at these expenditures, I have sticker shock, and when I started diving into it, and, you know, it is what it is, but I appreciate your time, and I think that we're below what the industry standard is for management and maintenance. Thank you.
Yeah. Ward, I want to thank you for always being a detailed person and digging into those sort of things. I think it's important, but I think for all of us, the dollar looks the same, but it sure doesn't buy the same it used to. So it always sounds like a big number, a hundred and eighty thousand. It's like, you know, ten years ago, that would have been eighty-five. That's all, you know, it's just the dollar itself isn't worth the same.
And I'll take this opportunity to thank Rachel for representing the city in Ruwapa for years.
We've enjoyed it very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Would you accept a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended with the one item already separately voted on?
Please.
I would move to approve the consent calendar for this April eleventh, 2023.
I'll second.
We have a motion. Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hoenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazzaro?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you. That concludes the business side of this. Before we move to adjournment of the first part of this meeting, we would like to acknowledge our outgoing council members. I want to start with Skippy, if I could. Skippy, you know, we're, we're short on pomp and circumstance, but we want to thank you for your service. So I have, I don't know where, what camera we're on, but we have a proclamation that memorializes your service here over the last four years. And I'm not going to get long-winded. I just want to read you what I wrote in a card to you to thank you. I wrote, "Skippy, you can be extremely proud and know that you have been an inspiration and a leader in Aspen. We know that you will continue to be an influence, a powerhouse, and an agent of positive change for years to come. The city of Aspen is indebted to you. Thank you for your service." Mayor Torrey.
Thank you. That's really sweet.
We have a couple of gifts for you as well upon your return, but don't cut your trip short for it. At this time, I'd invite any other council members for any comments before we let Skippy say a few words.
Skippy, it's been a pleasure. I thank you for your energy, your undying dedication to workforce housing. You're sometimes... your sometimes frustrating tenacity. Your thinking outside the lines and bringing new thought to, to the conversation. So the visionary thoughts of youth is appreciated, and thank you so much, Skippy.
Thank you. Rachel?
I was gonna say, Skippy, it's, it's been a pleasure. It's been a challenge. It's been exciting, and it's been educational. And I thank you for bringing, I, I would say it's less the interest in workforce housing and more the interest in community and maintaining community and having a community with children and people here in the future who had the same opportunity all of us at the table had once, many years ago. And so thank you for your commitment to that and your passion. And good luck on all your many pursuits. I, I know there's gonna be a lot of results in a lot of areas I can't even imagine yet. So thank you.
John?
Yeah, I prepared some short remarks. I wanted to wish my colleagues, Skippy and Rachel, the best of luck with their newfound free time. I enjoyed my time serving with each of you and will always look back on these two years with you and what the five of us here accomplished with staff's help. It wasn't easy, but I believe the outcome was in the best interests of our community. And the voter numbers on the STR tax question support that. Thank you both so much for your service.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
And I expect to, you to both stay involved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Skippy, if you have any comments?
I'll try to be, try to be brief. Just thank you to each of you for what you said and for the time to serve with you. It has really been an honor of a lifetime to get to serve in some small way in what I am, what is to me the most amazing community that's ever graced the face of the earth. And we have done a lot. We really have. We will be proud of, of what we've done the last couple of years. And it's just the start. As Rachel said, to preserve the opportunity for this community to continue to flourish is gonna take a lot more work and a lot more years. And I'm gonna be around for 60-plus, whatever that looks like, Team BD. But I think we all know I'm incapable of jumping in when something needs to get done. And so I just want to say thank you to each of you, to staff, to every citizen in our town. No matter where you fell on any issue or any election, all of us are part of this story and an integral part. And it's just been an honor to work for you, with you, in all the ways. And I want to congratulate Sam and Bill, who I could see until now. Weirdly, I only see myself. But I know you're in the room, and congratulations. There's a lot of work ahead of you. And I view my role as supporting the two of you, as well as the rest of the council and the organization with everything that I have because your success is our success, my success, and vice versa. So I will be eagerly seeing what comes next. There is, there's so much to do.
Thank you, Skippy. It's hard sometimes to ask for a round of applause, but can I get one for Skippy Mazero? Thank you so much. And now Rachel. Mick said it, said it well. If we really went on about your career and your history here, it would take us the rest of the night. So I will be brief again. I'm, I'm gonna read what I wrote to you and share that with everybody. Rachel, words cannot fully express what you have contributed to your family, friends, community, and beyond. Aspen is a better place because of your passion and commitment. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Torrey.
That is an understatement. Rachel has been an inspiration, a mentor, a friend, colleague, compatriot, you name it. Comrade in arms, a lot of the time. Rachel, it will be very different without you here. But we are so well-served. And, you know, you are such an inspiration. It, it's neat. I look over here at Bill and at Sam, and, you know, in a lot of ways, if it wasn't for the work that you have done and the representation that you've brought to this council and to the county, perhaps folks like myselfs or others wouldn't be running and being involved. So you've done more, more than just what you've done. You've inspired others to pick up the torch and keep going. So I, I have nothing but the utmost respect and thanks for you.
Thank you, Torrey.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate that very much.
I'll open it up to other council members if they have comments outside of the ones that they shared earlier.
I'll just say a few words here. I leaned over to Rachel earlier and asked, I'm not a betting man. I don't know if this makes sense, but I asked what the over-under on, on Rachel having tears. The unimaginable energy that you've put into this community over the decades is just unimaginable. And just as a side note, Rachel, my wife, Mimi, and I were in prepared childbirth class together 40...
Two years ago.
Forty-two years ago. Your, thank you for your foresight, your energy. And when your last meeting at RFAFTA, when you were on B.O.C.C., somebody called you Siri. I'm gonna add Alexa to that because you are, the institutional knowledge that you have is gonna be missed. And it's always impressed me how you can come up with the data that's dashed away in your head. I hope some way you can figure out to my meld with somebody, so. But don't go away and, thank you, Rachel.
John, any further comments?
Yeah, just because I mashed my two comments together, but I did want to say something special for Rachel. Had it and I lost it. Your, your dedication to this town has been exemplary. I don't think I can add much to what everybody else has already said, but you have been a great example for other people to emulate. And I'll try to do that.
Thank you, John.
Rachel.
Skippy?
Thank you. Rachel, thank you so much. The math might be wrong, but I think, you know, you started in your service officially to our community when I was four. And our community is so different, better for it. It has been truly a privilege to work with you and to watch you work. As you said, some of the times have been challenging, but man, have I learned a lot. And it, it, it does not matter where we fall on any number of issues, of which, you know, our Venn diagram is 85% plus. But to simply give your life to a community and to service is something deeply admirable that almost no one does. And I just thank you so much for doing that. And I don't know what the last four years would have been like, absence of your knowledge, which is, I mean, it is encyclopedic. And I hope you, I hope for us that we can find some way for you to pass that along to Bill and Sam and to the organization because it will be a tremendous loss to not be in the room. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Skippy. Thank you. Boy. Thirty years goes pretty fast. You can be surprised how fast it goes. And I can only say how lucky I feel like I've been to have been supported by so many and to have been given these opportunities in my time. It, it's just been amazing. And I, I have a few words for our new guys. I appreciate you running and certainly wishing you well. But first, I want to thank my husband, Paul, who's here today. And we're, we're leaving tomorrow to go on a nice little vacation. And oddly enough, it will be just about 20 years ago tomorrow when we first met. And so I said, when you find a man who can put up with a strong political woman, you better keep him around. And I've been very fortunate that way to have that support in my life this last 20, 20 years or so. And then there's all sorts of family and friends and people who've sent money or letters or given me little tips of advice. And, you know, I, I would say this, back when I had the brochure job, I got to go all around town, and it was great, you know, in terms of seeing people and hearing from people. And there could be something I was really muddling over and had four paragraphs to try to explain it. And somebody with the front desk would say, hey, did you see this? And say it in two sentences. And I'd be like, wow, that's the insight of the community at work. And I really, I really appreciate that. There are going to be a lot of tough issues in front of our new council. Nothing comes easy, and there's tough choices. I think our county manager likes to say a choice between right and right, and which right is stronger at a given time. But nothing is gonna be easy between the policy and then the funding and then the implementation. And it, it takes a long time to get any one thing really done. I mean, we bought the Burlingame property when John Bennett was mayor, and we're now finishing up Phase 3 of that in terms of affordability and things like that. And I often just say that the decision of a former council mayor to not build Burlingame was what pulled me back into life and pulled me back into office because I knew we needed that housing. I really have to say, just don't be shy, guys, and you guys. And remember, you are there to represent your locals to the state and to the federal government as much as our local issues. And that seems odd, but you don't want to call a congressperson out of 565,000 people to say, please, don't do this. I mean, you do sometimes. But you come to your council and you say, please help us protect the Thompson Divide and sign onto a letter. Please help us protect our women's reproductive rights and how important those services are to our residents, and that's why we support Planned Parenthood. But don't ever let the national issues go by you that a letter can be sent because people expect us to represent those issues as well. And I always will say, regionalism is important, but regionalism is not something you talk about. It's something you do. You go to their town, you go to their meetings, you go to water meetings. You understand what's happening in Ag and other communities and even our oil and gas communities as they try to make the transitions that we all need. So please be involved in things at a regional level. You know, I, I have been really lucky to be here. And I appreciate these thanks more than I could possibly tell anyone. But I, I really want to say I've always just been a tip of a spear, a tip of a whole bunch of other people in doing what they wanted and what they could support and what they saw as right. And, you know, there's, there's always some mistakes you make and things that don't work out right. I'd be the first to say the Living Lab did not work out right. But I certainly love having angle on one side and parallel on the other and an actual view of the mountain again instead of two super-duty trucks backed out so badly you don't even have a single lane. And if it takes a mistake to get things right, then, then that's what happens sometimes because you have to take risk. If you just play it safe, you'll never, you'll never get anything done. And a long time ago, in some of the counseling that we had, and it was the idea of backcasting, of saying, where do you want to be in 20 years? Where do you want your community to be 20 years? And then cast backwards to say, well, what do I need to do today to have that come to fruition in 20 years? So work on lasting things. And I, I know it's an odd way to put it, but you, you can't prove a counterfactual. You can't prove something that didn't happen or wouldn't have happened. So you, you can't prove that Aspen wouldn't be just as successful if we hadn't passed a half penny for the Open Space and Trails Fund and used it to buy Smuggler Mountain and participate with the Sky Mountain purchase. You can't say we wouldn't be a really successful community if we didn't have Burlingame housing and our workforce shortage wouldn't be as bad as Truscott. But believe you me, the council at the time got all sorts of grief about how ugly that Truscott addition looked and how we had to plant more trees to cover it up because of that. But, you know, where would we be without some of those really tough things? Where would we be without the Red Brick that only passed by three votes? Or we would have a gymnasium program, for sure. Might not have as many nonprofits and arts still in the community. Where would we be without the youth center and the ARC? You know, that, that was a, a big thing for our community, but a lot of people were opposed to it. It was too big. It was a wrong place. It was gonna be too costly. So always bear that in mind. What would traffic be like without a regional transportation authority in the bus systems and everyone contributing dollars equally from out our whole valley to be able to manage our traffic problems? I really don't know. But just know that you have to be brave and you have to go forward and you have to plant the seeds today for the tree you want to see growing tomorrow. And so thank you all for my time. Thank you to this council. Thank you to the city, to the management, to staff, to the people who really make our dreams come into fruition in taking random notes from a council meeting and turning them into reality. We all appreciate it very much. Thank you, one and all. I think I'm adjourned.
With that, I think in a, a motion to adjourn, maybe?
I think Rachel should do that.
I would like to make a final motion to adjourn of the Aspen City Council 2023.
Maybe Skippy should second it.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We have a roll call vote for adjournment, please.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes. Thank you. All right, we'll just take a few minutes to get organized.
Rangers.
The inauguration ceremonies are our new council members and our mayor. So without further ado, I will call Mayor Torrey to take, stand next to me and we will deliver the oath. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and please state your name.
I, and please state your name. I had to. I had to.
There's always a joker in the crowd.
I had to, that was just too easy. I, Torrey.
Do solemnly swear.
Being of sound mind and oath, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the, of the city of Aspen.
And the ordinances of the city of Aspen.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor.
Of the city of Aspen.
Of the city of Aspen.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Torrey, congratulations. Don't go away. I'm not done with you yet. Need to sign your oath of office.
My last will and testament. It's hard to smile on demand.
Good?
Good enough?
All right.
Thank you, Brooke.
May I have Counselman Guth come forward, please? Thank you. Would you please repeat after me? I, state your name.
I, William Guth, Bill Guth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the city of Aspen.
And the ordinances of the city of Aspen.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city council.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city council.
Of the city of Aspen.
Of the city of Aspen.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Bill, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to the city.
We can have a photo.
Hi. Can you introduce yourself to Brooke?
My name is Lisa.
My name is Brooke.
My name is Isabel.
Isabel, nice to meet you. How come you're so pretty? Because your mom's pretty and your dad's good looking? Okay. Photo op.
Here, do you want to hold this? Here, I'll hold you, buddy. Sorry.
No, no, no.
All right, guys. Thank you, Brooke.
Leave it, watch out. Okay, go, go, go.
Good job, guys. Counselman Rose. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, if you would please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Sam Rose.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the city of Aspen.
And the ordinances of the city of Aspen.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city council.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of city council.
Of the city of Aspen.
Of the city of Aspen.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Sam, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we good? All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You know what I mean?
We'll probably do the math later.
Different view, huh?
Yeah.
Much.
Much different view. Yeah, exactly that.
Thanks, sir. This is a call to order of the Aspen City Council Regular Meeting, Second Half for April 11th, 2023. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Guth.
Here.
Counselor Howenstein.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
Here as well. Uh, we will start again with citizens petitions and comments. If there's any members of the public that wish to speak this evening. And I'll look online as well. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Council members' comments this evening. I'm going to go ahead and start with our ward, I'm going to start with Ward and John and then we'll go to new council members.
I just told Sam that his four-year sentence commences right now. So welcome to, to Sam and Bill. I look forward to working with you to find solutions that our community faces. We'll get to spend a lot more time together than we probably want to. And we'll put our, our combined interest towards the betterment of our community. So thank you and welcome.
John?
Yeah, I just had a couple climate comments first. Yesterday, the U.S. Energy Information Administration announced that U.S. renewable energy surpassed coal-generated energy for the first time last year in 2022. Renewable energy has also surpassed nuclear generation for the second year in a row. The bad news is U.S. natural gas still supplies 39% of the energy in the United States. Last week, the Aspen Times, as they do every week, had an online poll and the question was, how do you feel about climate change? And while I understand that it isn't a scientific poll, the response shocked me. Out of eight, out of 787 votes, votes cast, 42% chose way over-exaggerated. The choice I chose, 29%, chose the main existential crisis for humanity, which leads me to something that happened today, which I think supports my vote. Today, in the New York Times, the Biden administration has, is preparing to, to evenly reduce allotments from the Colorado River. As the river shrinks, reduction in water supplies to states will be imposed for the first time in history. This is, I don't know what the details are going to be, but the seven states involved in the Colorado River drainage basin aren't getting the job done, so the federal government is going to take action. And lastly, I'd like to welcome Sam and Bill to council. I'd like to briefly address the five to zero unanimous votes that has been commented on quite a bit over the last few months during the campaign. Our previous council, we're obviously five very different individuals and we still are with the two new members. With, with the previous council, I want to say that each of us adjusted our thoughts and expectations to meet in the middle, to provide a unified front during the many difficult issues we faced. I like to think that the community would rather have five adults who can compromise and work together rather than have contentious three-to-two votes. This council will serve together for the next two years. It's my sincere hope that we can work together to make our community more sustainable and resilient and continue to be a lived-in community. And that in two years, we can look back and feel good about what we've accomplished for this community we've all chosen as our home. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Welcome to Aspen City Council.
Thank you. Bill, I'm gonna go with you first.
Sure. Not sure I'm super good at speaking for a long period of time in these situations, but, uh, I do want to say that it's an honor and a privilege to be up here with the three of you, uh, and I look forward to working with you. I'm appreciative to Rachel and to Skippy for their service to the community. Um, I'm sure I have a lot to learn about how hard they had to work and how much they had to sacrifice to do so. Uh, and I'm excited to share my perspective and, um, help shape the future of Aspen into the place that I wanted to be, um, and to continue to be, I should say, which is, I think, the best community in the world. So, I'm, uh, super fortunate and lucky to be part of Aspen. Very excited to have Sam up here with the rest of us and, uh, excited for the work that we'll do together. And thank you for all the support and encouragement and, uh, all of staff support and the support of the community to get me to this point.
Thanks, Bill. Sam?
Uh, let the sentence begin to echo Ward. I, it's an honor of a lifetime to be up here. I think Aspen's the best community on earth. Um, working with the four of you, I think, is going to be a wonderful experience, and I think we will get a lot done. I'm very thankful to Skippy and Rachel. Rachel was elected when she was 30. I'm 29, and I just see that as an opportunity to contribute to this community for a very long time. So, I'll end it with that, that I'm just very excited to be here, and it's gonna be a journey for a while.
Thanks, Sam. Uh, mayor's comments this evening, uh, just a few, uh, few brief ones, I hope. Number one, Shorts Fest is going on. If you guys have been, uh, working too hard like I have and like so many other people that work in this building have, uh, you may not have noticed, but Shorts Fest is on this week. Get out and enjoy it. There are still tickets available. Uh, and then just a little, uh, public service announcement, Highlands is closing. Get your butts over to Highlands before it closes. Uh, that's this weekend, and then, of course, Aspen Mountain opened for one more week as we wind down our season. Now, I'd like to read to you just a few comments that I wrote, uh, this afternoon. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you. Thank you for, uh, my reelection. Thank you for your support. Uh, thank you for your confidence, um, in me being in this seat. It is both a tremendous honor and responsibility, one that I don't take lightly. I always strive to work for Aspen, and that means all of our community members and our best future in Aspen with all of my being. Uh, I am always open and available, and I promise to follow up on any and every item that is brought to me. I work for you. A few of my priorities in these next two years, obviously housing, and that means improvements to our existing program and our existing units, as well as making more availability. Transit, guiding our process to return our best opportunities for public choice. And that, that's across everything. That's the entrance to Aspen. That's airport implementation. That's Highway 82 improvements, service improvements at Rafta, parking, et cetera. Our environment. I hope that we continue to lead on our respect, relationship, and balance with our most precious resource. Above all, probably, is our local community and our local business and building a livable, lovable, and supportive Aspen. I have other specifics, obviously, west-end traffic, public art and music, affordable amenities and restaurants, demolition, permitting, fees, and improvements, balancing the commodity and community. To the voters that supported a change, I hear your voices. Uh, in this last election, there were a thousand people that voted for, um, the other side of the mayor's question. Some of those voices actually share a lot of the work that I've done, the ethics that I hold, and the goals for the best of Aspen. Other voices and voters in that, though, simply support divisiveness. They dwell on tearing down without engaging in constructive dialogue. They feed on spreading negativity and unhappiness. We've all heard the saying that misery loves company. Misery can stand by itself. The voters have spoken, and Aspen is not the place for that. I once again extend the invite for discussion with anyone, especially those that spread misinformation and have uninformed opinion. I am energized and excited for these next two years, and I hope you are too. As Bill just said, this is still the best place to live on earth. Long live the Aspen idea. However, let's sprinkle it with a little bit greater responsibility, justice, equity, and compassion. In closing, I am just an Aspenite. I've lived here 30 years. There were issues and items that got me galvanized to run for a seat up here, but I'm just like any other community member. I'm not perfect. I don't hold all the answers, but I do have a willingness to work with every member of our community. My biggest hope is to inspire others for community participation. That is the ultimate game for me. I as well want to say hello and welcome to Bill and Sam. It is exciting to have a new start. Your voices are gonna be very valuable at this table, so I welcome you with, uh, nothing but open arms. With that, I'd say let's get to business. I'll look to the manager for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. A few things, uh, housekeeping first is the Accra Business Outlook Forum is on April 19th. Uh, I'm out of town that day, and so Diane Foster will be presenting on behalf of the city. Please let, um, Shannon know ASAP if you want to attend, so we can obtain a ticket for you. This is a ticketed event at the Aspen Institute for Breakfast. A few other things, you all received a copy of a letter I sent to the Colorado Department of Transportation today regarding my ongoing concerns about Highway 82 and using the, um, the, the current status of, of really the failing infrastructure. The road base has, has reached a point where I don't find this to be a productive, um, management plan temporarily that CDOT has asked us to work on. We have a meeting with CDOT later this month, uh, but I thought it was important they know ahead of time from a community perspective that we've reached an untenable position for the damage it's causing to the roadway, um, to the public infrastructure. CDOT's state infrastructure, such as the highway loops, I'm sorry, the, uh, signal loops, uh, as well as the, the private property claims that the city is feeling on the state's infrastructure. So, if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to talk about that further, but I want you to know that's been really on my mind, um, that I don't think we can go through another season of the current arrangement with CDOT, uh, for our community and that they're gonna need to look at a different service delivery model for Highway 82 in town. Any questions on that? The other thing I just wanted to make sure the council's aware of, the newspaper of record request for proposals is going out this week. So, um, some three of you had, who were, were here previously, had requested that. Um, so, I want you to be aware, that will go through an anal, a, a staff, um, review process, uh, and brought before city council to, um, either affirm or change the paper of record for notices as required by state statute and local municipal code. Uh, I also wanted to talk with you just a little bit about the two House bills that the city staff have been following closely in the state legislature. The first one is House Bill 213. Uh, Mayor Tori has provided testimony on this bill to the state, at the State House for us. And, and quite honestly, we've had really good conversations with the governor's office from my perspective. Uh, we, we have moved from a mandated system for the rural resort communities to a menu of housing affordability options as the approach, um, of which there will be X number of those affordability options that the resort community would have to meet. Um, Aspen's program is so far developed that it's gonna be, uh, pretty easy to meet those requirements. It'll be just filing that stuff with DOLA, most likely, uh, should this bill get passed. So, this is a huge change from where we were two weeks ago, uh, when I came to city council sharing with you, um, the, the concerns about this piece of legislation. Uh, please don't hesitate to, to reach out to Tori or myself. Um, we have another meeting tomorrow with the governor's office. Uh, I'm not gonna be on it, but Tori will, uh, as we continue to work through that with our other 15 rural resorts called out in the legislation. Uh, another House bill I wanted to just bring to your attention, and you've heard a little bit of talk about this, it's House Bill 231255. Uh, House Bill, uh, 1255's origin really has to do with some growth caps placed by front-range communities that were based upon not necessarily the ability to serve, but a desire to reduce the amount of construction in their communities. Uh, and the, um, the impact of this bill, though, however, on our high country communities is an unintended consequence. Um, and that is, is that it removes growth management, um, quota systems, uh, that are based upon employee generation and development of affordable housing for new growth. Off the table as a tool in your toolbox as an elected body for managing the impacts of, uh, additional growth in the community through development. Uh, at this point last week, we did send a letter of opposition to, uh, our local representative and Speaker McCluskey. So, I just wanted to let you know that that is a bill that needs just as much attention as 213. And protecting our community's values of local decision-making about whether a quota system should exist or not should really be locally held by the governing body, as you're advised by your constituents, rather than from the state, um, dictating, uh, what tools may or may not be in your toolbox, uh, to manage your local community. So, if you have any other questions, we're happy to follow up with you more on that. I just wanted you to be aware of those two key pieces of legislation that are, are gonna have significant impacts potentially to, um, the City of Aspen, uh, as a community, uh, if both of these are, were, were to pass. Uh, the House Bill 231255 made it out of committee, so it's going to the floor, uh, I think in the next week, is my recollection. Uh, we'll double-check on that one. Uh, the Senate Bill 213, uh, still has, um, some testimony period at committee level that it's going through. Any questions on either of those? Those are two big ones.
I think the, uh, 1255 got out of committee nine to two.
That is correct.
So, that's a, a reason for us to be concerned.
Yeah, the, the, it was a bill targeted at very specific front-range concerns without consideration of its impact to several other communities in the state.
Mountain resort centers.
So. Uh, the other thing, I wanted to give you a quick update on two things related to the airport. Uh, yesterday, I had, uh, uh, my, um, twice-a-year briefing meeting with Fly Aspen Snowmass. If you recall, that is the, um, really the review of the commercial flight patterns and use, uh, at the airport. So, we look at everything from load factoring to what are the employment counts, uh, what's happening with fares? What are the airlines doing in response to the dynamics of our resort community, uh, in various quarters of the year? I wanted to let you know that right now, um, commercial aviation actually is down about, uh, 9% uh, from where it has been. Um, and, and this past winter wasn't great for completion rate, um, with the amount of snowstorms. So, we saw a lot of diversions happening to Grand Junction or back to Denver. Um, and there's so, uh, there's a broken link really about when those diversions happen, how are those guests and locals getting to Aspen? And if there's a role that, that Fly Aspen Snowmass should play in addressing some of that, right? Because if you're stuck in Denver for three out of the six days of your vacation, because you can't get through to here, you know, you, in the future, may not choose our community as a location for you. And so, we, we continue to work on that particular issue. Uh, I also wanted to let you know that the employments on the commercial side are just shy of the 2019 levels. So, um, the, the, the load factoring shows that the, the plane seats are selling. Um, there's certain, like, times, um, based upon weather conditions, you can't fully sell out a CJR, uh, flight, uh, because it can't do the, the takeoff necessary, uh, due to, to payload. But I wanted you to just be aware, we're, we're really paying attention to what's going on with that. Um, general aviation continues to be, uh, 83% of the traffic out at the airport. So, what I'm reporting to you on is a very small percentage, but the highest volume of individuals coming into our community through the commercial aviation sector. Uh, there's also been some conversation around, uh, uh, you know, the CJR, um, 700 and its, um, likelihood of staying a viable aircraft, uh, for the Aspen Airport. Uh, I can tell you that out of, um, the, the, about a hundred or so of these airplanes left in, uh, the U.S. flight system, um, only 19 of them are owned by United or, or fly under the United tag, I should say. Um, and, um, the remaining are primarily under American Airlines. Um, however, another 10 of them, uh, had to be permanently grounded recently. So, the, the issue of having viable commercial air traffic will continue to be a hotly debated issue for our community, um, as we're, we're looking at improvements in navigation systems that allow much, uh, more, uh, sophisticated, um, navigation equipment to, to assist pilots in safely landing in and out of the Aspen Airport. Of course, I have no timeline on that. This is not my industry specialty, uh, by any means. Um, but I wanted to let you know that that, that continues to be a, a pretty big, big situation. Um, I, I also just think overall that, you know, we saw back in 2021 a really bullish market for commercial aviation here, and that is waning. This summer, commercial flights probably won't be more than 20 a day during the highest of season, which is lower than it has been in previous summers. I also wanted to just test base with you a little bit about today's Airport Advisory Board meeting, uh, which included the, a joint meeting between the Airport Advisory Board, the Board of County Commissioners, and the Federal Aviation Administration. Uh, it was about a two-and-a-half, three-hour meeting, uh, where the FAA, um, made it pretty clear that they view, um, what priority that needs to happen first for addressing the aging infrastructure at our airport. And that is to address what's called the airside first. So, that's runways, uh, both width, length, how planes move around in that space, um, uh, is, is a key, key part. And that while the community certainly has had an interest in moving forward with the terminal first, um, it's unlikely that the FAA will support that with their financial resources. And so, that is a huge indicator. The, the airport is several hundred millions of dollars worth of work, um, that, that needs to happen at it. And, uh, I don't believe that's a, achievable for our community without federal partnership, uh, and making it happen, just to be honest with you about how, how these projects go and what's happening with construction inflation, uh, here, here in our valley. So, I think that was some really disappointing news to the community, uh, B O C C and some of our Airport Advisory Board members. Um, my, my view is, is that we need to really focus on the airport layout plan, and that is what I, I will be advocating from the city's perspective, is let's get clarity on the, uh, mass and scale of both the runway and the buildings. Uh, and that needs to be a priority before we can really enter into these conversations, uh, about any other aspects of the airport. Um, it's just a matter of, if we continue talking about all these other issues around the sides, we're not gonna get to the meat of the issue, and that is having a, uh, airport layout plan acceptable to the community and, and that can be approved by the FAA. I'm happy to talk with any of you offline about this in more detail, um, but it, it is definitely a, a very new development, uh, so to speak, in the, um, the, the strong position of the FAA that we've experienced today in the community.
Yeah, I, um, I jumped on and watched that. They, they were, uh, broadcasting that, so I was able to watch some of that, and, um, I think Sarah just summarized it very well, uh, including the tone and tenor of the meeting. You know, it's interesting, two things I'd say is, one, you know, with 83% coming out of the, uh, private, uh, operator, uh, it's interesting because we're having such a, a, a large community conversation around this airport redevelopment, and yet the, the impacts to most of us are minimal, you know? Um, it, 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 it's a shame. It seems to be driven by that, the private usage. The other thing I wanted to share with folks- The other thing I wanted to share with folks is there were there were a number of really interesting comments, but the one that struck me was there was a caller that called in from Rifle. And it was just, it was really interesting to hear this person from Rifle talking about the impacts that they feel at at their airport and in their community in large part because of Aspen traffic. A lot of high season private airplanes have to land here, drop their passengers, and then they go to Rifle and they park in Rifle. And it was just very interesting to hear to hear the impacts that maybe many of us aren't aware of. And I just thought that was fascinating. I really appreciate that person calling in. Anyway, I don't know if anybody has has any questions or comments regarding the airport.
Just a high level. I know that for years there has been conflicting information about the CRJ seven hundred, how long it's going to be around. And I'm curious if there's any discussion about the Embardier one seventy, if it could move in, its wingspan is like nine feet longer. Could our runway handle those? I I I just need a really high level.
Sure, yeah. The E one seventy-five is another option that that need, though, actually is the additional navigational support to land at our altitude and with our terrain. And so it really is going to wait for the private market to address that through their their R and D at SkyWest or United or American, whoever wants to make the investment for for that to occur. And what I can tell you, though, is is like the E one seventy-five is now flying into Gunnison. We are one of the last airports solely reliant on the CJR seven hundreds for commercial air traffic. And I will, I'll miss the next airport advisory board meeting, but it will be about aircraft mix, which is which gets at what you're talking about, Ward, is is what what type of aircraft should this airport be supporting as what's called a a type three airport? And that that's small commercial with general aviation. I would say there's a few airports that have quite the mix we have of having very little commercial compared to GA. I will tell you, GA flights overall are down right now over the past year. I can't remember how much. I don't know if we feel that really that they're down, but they are. And I can get those exact numbers if you want from from the airport for for takeoffs and landings on the GA side compared to previous years.
And just one other general question. I think that the airport has been considered not in noncompliance or nonconforming for that, and FAA was saying that they wouldn't allow that. Have they changed their position on that?
Sure. So the FAA's views is that they have a they have standards and regulations, and every airport's compared to those. And if you don't meet one of those sand standards, it either affects the type of airport you are, or you can request and negotiate what's called a modification. Currently, the Aspen Airport has somewhere between eighty and eighty-five modifications from the standards. The FAA has been clear that that should be a list closer to forty. And so things like runway width, length, how planes taxi are all things that they're saying not anymore. If you're not aware, when you're in the FAA tower there, that those folks actually cannot see the end of the runway right now, right? They are having to use cameras to to supervise the the takeoff and landings. And and that's not, you know, that's that's not the safest thing for our community to be doing either. So there's a lot of different conflicting needs, and that's an example of one that's a modifier that maybe needs to go everywhere benefit of the community.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other items, Sarah?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll bring us down on our agenda to first reading of ordinances. And we have ordinance number seven, which is the spring supplemental budget adjustments, and ordinance number eight, updates to park rental and special event municipal codes. Ordinance number nine, this is updates to municipal code for voter approved short term rental tax. This is a brief reminder, this is the first reading of ordinances, an opportunity for council to get questions and requests for information for our second reading. We do like to pass ordinances on first reading in order to give them the opportunity for public hearing. So. Thanks, Amy. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Council members, young, older, looking at you. Tonight I'm here to speak to the one of two adjustments to the annual budget adoption process. We have a spring and fall supplemental scheduled every year. My name is Pete Stricker. I'm the finance director for the city. The gentleman to my my right, your left, would be Matt Grau. He is our new budget manager. He started back in January. Matt's here to support me, to make sure I don't mess anything up. In the future, I will play second fiddle to Matt because he will take over these presentations on the budget. I do want to say thank you to the budget team downstairs and also the department directors behind me for all the work they did on the budget packet for tonight. The packet is sixty-six pages long. I'm sure you all have combed through that effortlessly. I tried to consolidate my notes to a single page to try to speed it up a little bit for tonight. In total, the packet has sixty-six million dollars in requested authority. That sounds like a significant amount of money, but I do want to preface that with that the opening fund balance basically changed by sixty-two million to the positive from what we adopted in the original budget back in November. The reason for that is because the majority of this request is related to carry forward appropriations from last year, so things that council has already seen, already blessed, largely in the capital arena. So basically, in that sixty-two million, fifty-eight million is really carried forward for capital and operating items. To summarize some of that fifty-eight million, we have a twenty million dollar placeholder alone just in our affordable housing fund that is really to take advantage of kind of opportunistic items that come up mid-year in case there's an opportunity for the the community to move forward on on some interesting property or something of that nature that's sitting there. Obviously, those things still come to the council table before we act upon those. So there's, this is just base level appropriation in the in the budget, but it doesn't actually fully authorize the spend at that time. We also have eight million dollars in the budget still for Burlingame three that's being rolled forward from last year into this year. Another four million for the Penn Stock lining project at utilities, and another one million roughly for the West Red Pump Station improvements, also in utilities. I have a million dollars for the Moore Ranch acquisition that's being carried forward from last year to this year, just due to the timing on closing on that particular item. And then we have our savings program under city financial policies is about another three million or so. So in total, those items alone capture about forty million of the fifty-eight million being rolled forward. In the packet, you will see that there is a lot more requests in terms of capital items than just five or six that I've listed for you right now. So a lot of that is related to the timing on acquisitions, supply chain issues, contracting, failed bid opportunities due to supply and and demand and that nature. Also, we have things that are actually just timed to be multi-year projects, so those things have to carry forward. The next section in the budget packet is really four million dollars and basically in technical adjustments. These are things largely that the council has seen since when the budget was originally adopted back in November for this year. So the biggest one is of that four million is three and a half million for Burlingame Phase Three. So there are also some basically accounting actions in that section where we have to transfer funds between our monies between funds, and we actually have to do that as an appropriation, even though that money's not going out the door, it's just moving from one bucket to another bucket within the city's accounting structure. And then lastly, where I'd probably spend the rest of my time in in presenting this to the council members is the new appropriations request in this packet, so things that haven't been seen. That's where the majority of the tax really is around in in this packet about how those dollars are needed, what they're what they're for, things of that nature. Maybe there's been some changing dynamics, maybe there's been some new mandates. Those are the criteria that basically trigger a new appropriation request. And we have three point two million in this packet. The majority of that, again, is under capital. It's about two million dollars in capital. There is four hundred combined, four hundred thousand combined for both the Armory renovation and the Rio Grande restaurant space renovation, two hundred thousand for each of those. There is also just over eight hundred thousand dollars for parks and open space, really under two projects. There's a septic tank that needs to be done out at Cozy Point. That's the largest ticket price ticket item, excuse me, ticketed item. And then an irrigation pump at Burlingame Phase Three again. We have five hundred thousand dollars in there for an urgent boiler replacement project at the Wheeler Opera House. It's actually three boilers, but we need to really get that project underway before we would have a failure for the winter season. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is in there for the parking garage, basically to do some automation down in that space. One, to help with staffing issues that we're having as as a employer for the valley. Obviously, every employer is feeling this. But two, also for the the general public's benefit in terms of identifying what spaces are available in that that's that garage where they're located. It helps with traffic and also the inbound and outbound of that actual parking structure. It's able to capture license plate recognition and things like that. And then we have seventy-five thousand dollars for two employee housing projects. There's a small remodel at a water place unit, which will give us more livable space in one of our units. And then also actually a conceptual design project at the streets campus underneath Castle Creek Bridge to potentially add some housing on that existing space that the city owns. So that's two million of the three point two million in total. The the rest of that one point two million is coming from one time or ongoing operating costs. The majority of that, again, is under one time in nature. Roughly nine hundred thousand of that's coming from four areas. One is I spoke to the council back in January, I think it was, that we had heard from our natural gas provider that there was going to be a rate hike in natural gas prices for January and February. That did materialize, and it has it has subsided, so that's the good news. But it basically added about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars across our different facilities to support that. So we're just asking to add that back into the budget. You heard about the Ruadi hydroelectric facility licensing just tonight and approved that, so that's in the packet. And then we have two other items, short range transit study for looking at our traffic flow and and our parking needs for the community. This gets updated periodically. That's two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And then some contract support services for the community development department, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is basically some additional resources to help with the volume of work that's being experienced in the, again, staffing, which is a somewhat of a recurring theme in some of these areas, and how we're short a number of staff and to be able to provide the right service for the the building community, we need some temporary support. That might continue for a couple of years. Lastly, in terms of staffing, the packet does have a net increase of three point two FTE across all funds. There is an IT client relationship administrator position, basically to help support one of our biggest software platforms, which is Salesforce, to help with the whole intake and and payment process for permits for the development review. We have two positions at parks and open space. One is a landscape architect. Another is the project manager for capital projects. Obviously, we've been looking at some bigger projects, and we need to basically some more some more staff to take care of that and keep things moving forward at a at a clip that's acceptable to the community. And then we have a net zero, no new funding needed position at recreation to basically make a temporary maintenance tech position into permanent. We'll basically are requesting just to move existing budget authority out of a temporary labor pool and move it into a permanent labor pool. We do have a net decrease of point eight FTE in the kids' first program also included in the packet, and that is essentially dropping one intern position that we have. Basically, the staff doesn't have capacity really to support three interns and train them, and it's also a difficult position to fill. And so we want to cap that at two and do a good job and basically basically support the childcare providers to the best of our abilities, but be realistic. And also, at the same time, add point two FTE to the admin position at that department and and bring the support there that they need to from part time to full time, essentially. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will stop rambling and take it back to the council for questions and comments, and happy to proceed from there.
Thank you. Ward?
I read, I move, we read ordinance seven on first reading.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for reading of ordinance number seven. Any further discussion?
Does that preclude us from having discussion on the?
This is just to read it, and then we'll, yeah.
It opens the floor to discussion.
Yeah. Great. We have a motion, I think. Can we have a roll call vote for reading of ordinance number seven, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes.
Ordinance number seven, series of 2023, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Aspen, Colorado appropriating an increase in the 2023 municipal budget and the 2023 budget for Trescoa Phase Two Affordable Housing Fund, which is a component unit fund of the city of Aspen and authorizing appropriations pursuant thereto.
All right. Opportunity for questions now, requests for information coming back and the like. Do you want?
Happy to start.
Sure.
Sarah and her team did answer a lot of my questions prior. Thank you very much for those thorough answers. A few issues and and concerns that I have that I wanted to raise at this point. No particular order, although the one I'm probably most passionate about is the funding of the Armory Building improvements. And I would ask you all to think about what I think would be a tragic mistake by funding this and proceeding with a five-year lease term for Accra in the Armory Building. Firstly, I think it's an irresponsible use of money to spend two hundred thousand dollars on a building that very soon can and should be converted to a community use as desired by the community. Secondly, I think five years is far too long of a term. I could be amenable to a much shorter term, two to three years on on an absolute maximum level, but I think that tying this up for five years is a disservice to the community. I think that this building, as you may have heard me talk about, could be a wonderful asset for this community as a food hall, a really interactive community gathering space. I think we should get to work on it right away, and I think that tying it up for five years is is a tragic mistake. So I understand that there have been previous council discussions and commitments and direction on this, but I would ask you all to reconsider that, and and let's understand what the ramifications of of changing direction on that might be, but I really think that that would be a tragic mistake on our behalf. Secondly, on planning support services, generally very supportive and appreciative of of the community development department and planning department for seeking outside resources in an effort to to provide those services more efficiently. My my one concern there is that we are not, by by approving this expenditure, which more than likely will be an ongoing expenditure in future budgets, in my opinion, we are not concurrently reducing the FTE count of that department. And so we are adding to the overall cost and and burden of that department in, I think, in a fairly permanent way. And I think we should be conscious of that.
Do you do you have the item number?
I'm. Let's see. Bear with me, Tori.
Yeah, I'm sorry, man. I just wanted to see if I can make notations in the right place.
It's page fifteen in.
Page fifteen.
My numbers.
Yep, yep. All right. That's it, Bill, I got it. Page fifteen is cool. Thank you.
Page fifteen, cool. Maintenance tech. This was the janitorial custodial position. I also.
I also don't know which number, but here, page 18. I'll write down page numbers or item numbers in the future. You may have seen Sarah's response to my question here. You know, I'm interested to know how a position like this compares on an hourly basis to subcontracting this position to the private market. The response that I got that, including benefits and taxes, the hourly rate would be $38.69. I don't know, Sarah, if that was adjusted for including vacation time and sick days. So if you deduct that out from the number of work hours or days per year, whether that number goes up or not. But I'm not sure the city, in a position like this, is the most efficient cost-wise provider of a service like that. And I think we should consider that. I think that you can hire a custodian in Aspen for less than $38.69 per hour. And, you know, they would be very incentivized to perform their job in a time-efficient manner because they have other work to do as well. So I think that we should consider that approach on this topic and for other direction moving forward. Similar concept, but a little bit different of a discussion on the landscape architect position. I'm concerned that, you know, the City of Aspen organization is trying to do too much internally. And I respect that there are certain tasks and certain management roles that do need to be performed internally. But I think that a lot of design work in particular could be subcontracted to the incredible design community that we have around us in the Roaring Fork Valley and beyond. And I'm not sure that we do it in the most cost-efficient way internally. I know on paper, sometimes it can seem like, oh, yeah, you know, we can hire one FTE for X dollars per year and they can tackle all these tasks. But I really, I'm not sure that I believe that that is the most cost-efficient way and the most effective way to do that. So those are my big items that even after addressing my questions, I want you all, I ask you all to please consider my perspective on. And thank you again for all the support on my first ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, so, Bill, just to be clear, I've got four areas that you're looking for further discussion on. Do you need any additional information to come back to you? So, for example, the first one, the Armory. I need to hear more from you. And we don't need to do it right now. We can do it second hearing or even off time. For example, you're saying five years, not what you're, you're looking for a shorter timeframe. Your overall goal here is to get the Armory renovation going.
Correct.
It's not about, it's not necessarily about the 200,000. It's not about, but it's about that you would like to see the next phase coming forward.
Yeah, I mean, it is about the 200,000 because, you know, the City Hall functioned in there just fine without spending that money. The county offices functioned in there recently without spending that money. So I don't understand why suddenly we need to spend that money to accommodate ACRA. But the bigger picture, you are correct, is about getting this restored to community use. And I think that the follow-up information for me on that one and for all of us, if we're considering this as a group, is, you know, what are the ramifications of not funding that? And understanding that, and, you know, can we come back to the table and have discussions with ACRA as a partner of our community to figure out an amicable solution?
And also the funding for moving that project forward is something that we've been having discussions on over the last year and such. So, planning support contract, I heard that you were questioning about how effective that is. And you have concerns about it ongoing because the demand may not be going away. So you have some concerns about outsourcing that at this time?
No, not exactly. So I very much support the outsourcing of that. I think that is great. I think the private market can help us meet the demand and do so efficiently. My concern is that we are not reducing the FTE count in that department commensurate or concurrent with that added $350,000 expenditure.
Thank you.
Right? So we are not trading anything in for doing so. And right now, we are at a, probably what is a peak period of demand for planning services. I don't know that that will continue forever, but we know that that FTE count will not go down quickly in the future, right? We don't want to fire people. We don't want to hire them and fire them six months later, a year later, whatever the term might be. So I think we need to be conscious of the fact that we are adding on something that is likely going to be a continued budgetary expense, but we are not trading anything for it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Any other items, Bill?
Kind of the two sort of labor items. One was the maintenance tech and?
I meant beyond those.
No, those are my primary ones, you know, lots of learning experience on reviewing the spring supplemental. And thanks, Pete, and appreciate all your support.
Thanks. Any other questions or requests for information coming back to you for second reading?
More listening than talking right now, but I guess I would be curious on some of the things that Bill had said and especially the ramifications of the Armory discussion, just because I do echo his sentiment of wanting that to be community space sooner rather than later.
No comments. I read the packet fully and appreciated the detailed questions that were asked. My questions have been answered.
Thanks, Sean.
Ward? Yeah, I had a number of questions that I addressed and they were combined with Sarah's answer in her email this afternoon, answers most of them. And what I would like for addressing and second reading is realistic ability to fill those 3.2 FTEs. I know that getting people to fill these positions has been a great challenge. And it's a, I think, a good subject of conversation that Bill brings up. The, what I had distilled down is internally versus contracting externally, the ramifications it has on full-time employees. I know that Comdev has been looking for two FTEs for a while and is contracting this out, a result of the lack of the ability to fill those positions. And as far as the Armory is concerned, I think we all want it to be ready tomorrow. But there have been reasons and there are reasons why it's phased in the timeline it is and how that relates to the old power plant offices being used there. So a discussion or clarification of what that timeline is and why it is for five years. And to answer Bill's question, why 200,000 now when it wasn't needed for the county in the past? And that coming back at second reading is fine with me. I did go out to Trescott today and looked at those stairs. It's, I'm always shocked. I always have sticker shock when I look at the costs of these improvements. And you can see through those stairs now. And it, I think, has to be considered the cost of ownership of a building that is, what, 40 years old now? I'm not sure how old it is, but there's continued maintenance that's needed. And it's just $1.8 million for stairs and $89 million for planning was a shock to me. But, you know, so is the cost of everything, so. So that's the summary of what I'm looking for clarification on for second reading.
Thanks, Ward.
Tori, I had one more thought if I could. Sorry, I missed it because I wrote it down during Pete's discussion. But I would be interested to know if the boilers at Wheeler could be replaced one at a time rather than all three at once and what the cost-benefit analysis of that would be.
Thank you. Any questions that I have have been summarized in some of the questions that you've already received. If I have any further, I will get them to you before second reading. And with that, Sarah?
Would you like us to respond with any information this evening? A lot of these we have information on. We just provided high level in our email, so it was digestible in the afternoon.
No. No. I think that there's maybe discussion around some of these, but any of the facts and information that you've shared and I think if anybody needs any more, that we'll get it. But I think opening that right now is probably not what we need to do. I'll figure out how to kind of bring some of Bill's concerns back in the most constructive conversation. It might be something a little outside of the supplemental because he's not just talking about budgetary concerns and some other kind of machinations there. All right. With that, I would accept a motion for Ordinance Number Seven on first reading.
I move we adopt Ordinance Seven, Series 2023, on first reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Ordinance Number Seven on first reading, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you.
Here's our first five-vote vote.
Aim on us.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing it as the first.
Five to zero vote.
There will be more. This next item is Ordinance Number Eight. This is also a first reading. Thank you to all the members of staff that were here for that. This is Ordinance Number Eight, Updates to Park Rental and Special Event Municipal Codes. While they're getting set up, I can take a motion to read.
I move we read Ordinance Eight, Series 2023.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, and further discussion. See, now, could we have a roll call vote to read Ordinance Number Eight, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes.
Ordinance Number Eight, Series of 2023. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aspen, Colorado amending Chapters 2.12, 14.20, and 15.04 of the City of Aspen Municipal Code to adopt amended rules, regulations, and fees applicable to park rental permits and special event permits and authorizing staff to establish policies for park rentals and special events.
Thanks, Nicole. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Welcome, Bill and Sam.
Thank you.
My name's Matt Kuhn. I'm the Parks and Open Space Director. I'm joined with Nancy Leslie here. And I wanted to thank the broader team that's contributed to what we're here to present to you on first reading today. That includes our parks and special event staff that aren't here, Steve Barr, Sam Lovstad, as well as Desiree. And I wanted to also thank the attorneys, Jim and Kate, for all their help on this. It's been really valuable to me and the team. We're here tonight for first reading of some long-needed updates to the municipal code related to park rentals and special events. Over the last five to 10 years, we've seen a shift in how our parks are used and reserved. We've seen increases in complex rentals, such as large wedding receptions and private corporate rentals, and requests for commercial uses, such as catered picnics and regular rentals for yoga and personal trainers in the parks have also been increasing. These types of rentals have challenged the former sections of code where we essentially were lumping everything into the special event category. While these changes in rentals have been more pronounced recently, I do want to point out that the former special event code that we're revising here was last revised and adopted in 1992. The changes proposed in 14.20 in general aim to add clarity and distinction to the two types of uses that we see, park rentals and special events. The changes contemplated to the municipal code here in Ordinance Eight will be accompanied by two policy documents, one for the park rentals and one for special events. Our aim is that the changes to code are long-term and lasting, where the two policies recognize that we will adapt and change as needed with future emerging rentals, trends, and events. The draft policies have been included in the packet for tonight's meeting. We welcome discussion and further refinement of these policies at the second reading for this ordinance. And we're currently aiming to adopt those two policies via resolution later in May after the ordinance hopefully is adopted on second reading. We've been working on this process for over a year now. And from the onset, we've set the goal that we wanted to ensure that our parks and public spaces were predominantly open and available to the community and for their enjoyment. And that rentals and events should not significantly impact both the park as an asset, but also the people that enjoy them. We heard from council at one of our work sessions that we're generally making the right decisions and heading in the right direction, so we've not sought large or significant changes. Our initial work session occurred in August of '22, followed by a second work session in late February of this year. Between those two work sessions, we worked in partnership with our communications department to solicit feedback from various stakeholders in the community. We held an open house in January and maintained an Aspen Community Voice page with a questionnaire component during the months of January and February. As I previously mentioned, the primary challenge, or sorry, changes to the code bolster the definition of park rental. Many things within the code related to special events are not changing. Formerly, the code utilized the number of participants as the primary defining characteristic. And importantly, there were no distinctions on the duration of the event. The proposed code and policy will establish new limits for the maximum duration, number of people, and the amount of infrastructure allowed. Commercial rentals is another change that is contemplated in these code revisions. Council has indicated that there is support for commercial uses in parks. And these changes to the code will enable local businesses, for example, to hold yoga classes in Pepke Park or to host catered picnics at Molly Gibson. Council, at the last work session, directed staff to define a small commercial use separately from the larger commercial use. And you'll see that with two separate fees for small and large commercial rentals. Generally, the fees, changes proposed in Section 2.12 align the fees to the proposed rental and special event structures. Fees for park rentals will now be applied uniformly across the board. We've aligned this fee with the former athletic use rate, which is proposed to increase slightly to $32 an hour. This means that generally all park rental fees, and that's from '29, this generally means that all park rentals will pay a base rate of $32 an hour, regardless of use. Athletic fees are generally consistent with the former fee ordinance. However, a $100 fee is proposed to offset the labor and materials needed to establish sports fields. New fees are proposed for the commercial use of the skate park at $50 an hour, or, sorry, $50 per day, as well as an annual fee for day camps to utilize park locations for drop-off and pickup. That fee is proposed at $300 per year. During our outreach, we heard from community members that certain park rentals have an impact to their neighborhoods and their experience in parks. We've taken that to heart and with certain thresholds within the policy, staff will be able to set limits and manage the frequency and impacts to neighbors and the broader community, whether for commercial or private usage. We believe that the proposed changes in Ordinance Eight bring the park rental, special event code, up to date and enable key changes that will help ensure that our parks and public spaces are managed appropriately for public health and well-being, quiet contemplation, and connection to nature. With that, we're prepared to hear and collect your questions and feedback. And we'll prepare responses for those if you'd like and if necessary, for the second reading on April 25th. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I'll look this way first. Sam?
Yeah. Thank you. Just a few questions and some of it's ignorance and some of it's, I'm sure you have the answers to. So feedback from affected parties. So I was just wondering if you've heard any pushback from any, especially the business side of things, that you're affecting their business negatively by charging these fees or not? And the fees, if they believe it's appropriate? It's sort of like a philosophy I took on the campaign trail of reaching out to the affected parties if they didn't come to the work session. I would just love to see that take place in some form. I had questions about enforcement, hoping that in the sake of fairness that if there are new rules implemented in the parks, that they were enforced properly so it didn't make people feel like they should just break the rules to not pay the fees. Does this affect any of the annual events? And with that question, like, how does the applications work to reserve? No, I didn't think so. But like, it, like? No, I didn't think so, but like, it, like, is every park up for rent? Like, no, it's only certain parks? And uh the parks that are up for rent, are there any annual events on those parks right now? Yeah, so those dates are just blocked out and the ones that are there, okay. That's a good clarification there then. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Ward, got anything on this one?
Chuckling at the bobbleheads here. My comments on this are just that, you know, the change in uses of the parks over time. I think we have to react to that, and the wear and tear on the on the parks and trying to come for the parks are, I love the 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 quote, quiet contemplation of the parks. Thank you, Matt. The um, in the special events, uh tho- those that seem to have morphed towards a commercial aspect other than community-centric. So I I'm I'm supportive of this. I'm glad to see that we're making adjustments after so many years. And sometimes it's like the, uh, here we go, the lobster, the lobster in the pot, you turn the heat up and before you know it, they're they're red. Uh, and sometimes you just don't see these changes coming. My roots, I have roots back to to Maine, so I use lobster instead of frogs, but um the the changes uh in the usage just seem to to creep up on us, and thank you for addressing this.
Thanks, Ward. John, any questions or requests for information?
Uh, no questions. I did want to address uh one of Sam's questions about feedback. I've heard from several of the yoga groups who initially were upset about the fees, but when uh it was discussed, I learned these talking points from you guys, that this started during COVID. The outdoor use of the parks is when it really kind of took off. And since the, you did take their feedback, uh they felt like the fees, the the people I've spoken to feel like the fees are fair. So um, I think this is all a step in the right direction because I think we've all heard from community members that our parks have been usurped by special interest groups. So something needed to be done, and thanks for your hard work on this.
Firstly, so appreciative of the parks in our community. Such a special part of my Aspen experience and um appreciate all that you guys do. I am generally supportive of this. I understand the impact that some things have had on our parks. And then I'm, you know, I'm not sure that a large wedding is appropriate in in one of our parks, for example. I I get that. What, where I'm struggling is this small commercial fee concept, uh and the size of that group of five or greater, five or less participants. And it somewhat ties into Sam's comment about enforcement. I I I think there's no way to reasonably enforce a commercial activity of less than five participants. I think we're just, we, I think we've selected too small of a number there. It's a rule that's there for the sake of making a rule, but how are we ever going to figure out whether somebody's doing a commercial activity or not a commercial activity with such a small group? I I I just think it's impractical. Uh, and is it a problem? I mean, I think a lot of the feelings that we're having about the park rentals that started, I think, as John alluded to during COVID, are are big events and, you know, fifty-person yoga classes or um, you know, all sorts of, you know, large picnics with tables and chairs and things like that. Are those appropriate for our parks? Maybe not, but um, small ones, I, maybe they are appropriate for the parks, and maybe this is too small of a number to realistically enforce. You know, I don't think any of us want a park police force walking around and and asking us and interrogating us and trying to figure out whether I'm playing soccer with my kids or I'm being paid to teach kids how to play soccer. That's not a desirable outcome to me. So I, you know, I ask all of us to consider that. I ask staff to contemplate whether, you know, there's a different approach to that. Do we eliminate the concept of the small use and small fee and small regulation entirely? Do we raise the number of participants? I'm wondering whether that's that's a better approach, but overall, I understand what we're trying to accomplish here. I'm so appreciative of the parks and the balance that you generally strike in providing great amenities to the community and our visitors. So tha- that's my big thoughts on that one.
Thanks. Thanks, Bill. For me, I uh same comments I had when we work sessioned with this. You know, I just want us to be uh applying um the right permitting and fee structure to get what we want. I I go back to the example of yoga in the park, um and I I asked at our last meeting on this topic if this was something that we should be providing through our own rec. department. Because this doesn't guarantee that we're going to see that. We're hoping that this is a condition that is acceptable and that works for everything, but I just really am hopeful that we see some of the activity that we want to see. And for me, uh group yoga in Pepke was fantastic. And it was a great message, being next to the road there. I mean, people were seeing it, our communities out and active together, pursuit of health and and enjoying the outdoors. So for me, I want to see that stuff, you know, continuing. Uh, I really appreciate Bill's input here on that small group stuff because, for exam, because that's another thing. I I I love that. I think that's a a a positive for Aspen. I don't think we want to uh deter it, but um, you know, so so I'll have, I I want a little bit more dialogue on this when we bring it back for a second. But uh similar, that's been said here in in large part. I'm very appreciative of this coming forward, so. With that, I would take a motion to approve on first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve on first reading ordinance number eight, series twenty twenty-three, updates to park rental and special event municipal codes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. Could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number eight on first reading, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Maritorie.
Yes. Thank you. Good to see you guys.
Thanks.
Our next item here is ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty-three. This is the updates to the municipal code for the voter-approved short-term rental tax.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pete Strecker again, Finance Director. I'm just here for a technical item. Uh, basically, the voters approved on November eighth, twenty twenty-two the short-term rental tax uh increase on vacation rental uh businesses. And so this is a technical ask to basically insert that language into the municipal code to honor the voter's wishes. So with that, I'm requesting um approval on first reading for ordinance number nine.
Thanks, Pete. Council members, any immediate questions or requests for information? This is first reading. Bill, I'll start. Your end?
I have a thought on it. I don't have a question. Do you want that in further discussion or now?
Anytime.
Yeah. I understand that this is technical. I'm so frustrated and disappointed with the complexity of this tax. I'm not opposed to a short-term rental tax, and I understand that it was needed and probably should have been done long ago, but the complexity of the way in which this tax was implemented, and I respect and understand that it was passed by our voters. But, you know, just this week, Community Development sent out a a bullet in to the community. I don't know if that goes out only to people who have short-term rental licenses or otherwise, but you know, they're having a lot of trouble figuring out how to allow short-term rental license holders to implement this tax structure with Airbnb and VRBO, et cetera. And to me, that just exemplifies that this is unnecessarily complex. And the point that I keep going back to is like, what is the different impact on the community, whether I rent my house out? And why should that person renting the house out pay a different tax rate than my neighbor who does not live here full-time? And I think it just adds unnecessary complexity. It shifts rentals to the gray or black market. And and I just so totally in opposition to the way that it was structured that I cannot support this, even though I understand it's a technical item.
Okay. John?
Gosh, we worked on this a long time. I fully support this.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
Ward, any questions or requests for information?
Well, I share some of Bill's concerns, and it is complex, and there are reasons why we wound up where we did, because it was a a horse by committee that wound up being a camel maybe, but um after many, many hours of discussions and work, this is what came out. This is what the voters approved. As far as it being difficult for Airbnb and VRBO and other um rental that I I don't have a particular um concern with them having to adopt and adapt. So I, although it's it's not the perfect um tax, it is what was approved and it's what we wound up with, um so I will support it.
Questions or anything come back?
Nothing for me.
Okay, great.
Will we read on first?
Yeah, we need to read it.
Yeah. I move uh that we read ordinance nine, series twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
A motion and a second for reading ordinance nine. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for reading of ordinance number nine?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Maritorie.
Yes.
Ordinance number nine, series of twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aspen, Colorado, amending Title twenty-three of the Aspen Municipal Code by adding chapter twenty-three point five-four entitled Short-Term Rental Tax to include the new excise tax on short-term rentals approved by the city electorate on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, and setting forth details in regards thereto.
Thank you. And a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance uh nine, series twenty twenty-three.
On first reading?
On first reading.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, I I mean, I I could make a couple of comments. Uh, Bill, we did go through an exhaustive process with this. We did survey our community. Um, truthfully, uh, a Ford tier STR tax uh was, I think, shown to me through the survey that that was the preferred. So our simplification of this down to the five and ten. And if you want to get into the discussion about what's the difference between an owner-occupied or a non-owner-occupied property and what their impacts on the community are, we did some studies on that, and I can give you my own kind of take on it. I appreciate your comments. I think what we ended up with here was really a a labor of compromise, taking community input uh and tackling so the issue that was at hand. So, yeah, um, i- it's probably not perfect in many people's eyes, but I'm very proud of the work that we put into this and the and that what we've come out with. I certainly hope that VRBO and um uh any other online clearinghouses are able to figure this out because they've done it in several other communities already. So I I don't really think that this is going to be a block for us or them, um because it's already going on. So hopefully uh we can talk about this more at second reading. Any other discussion at this time? Could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number nine on first reading, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
No.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes, did we move for adoption? Was there a move in second for adoption?
I thought we did.
Yeah, you did.
You and John.
That was first reading, I thought. Okay, to read it.
You did both.
Okay, yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Maritorie.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Pete.
Yep.
Thanks, Pete.
Pete, I owe you one on that comment.
I'm sure it's coming.
We have no public hearing scheduled for this evening. That'll bring us down to our action items, and action items tonight are uh about our couple of boards and and commission assignments. So we're going to go through this, and we'll just go through it uh in order that it's presented to us. The first item that we need to be discussing is the election of the mayor pro tem. Uh, the current pro tem is Ward, who has been the pro tem, I think, for the last
Four years.
Four years.
Uh, I'd like to comment on that. I I took um, became mayor pro tem in the uh second half of my first term. I think it's really important that somebody that has um council experience to be able to be the mayor pro tem in the absence of uh the mayor. I think uh um Tori has been such a diligent mayor that um I would, I think I've probably acted in an official capacity for for one uh, for one ordinance or hearing for about fifteen minutes. But it does, it does carry a certain amount of prestige and um I I think that it's appropriate that somebody uh does have experience, and for for that reason, I I'd like to see uh John Doyle uh take over the duties as mayor pro tem.
Thanks, Ward. I'm supportive of that. I know that Sam wanted to uh make a comment here, so Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, I think even without necessarily the support, I'd just like to throw my hat in the ring for mayor pro tem. Since it has been a figurehead position mostly, and I don't expect Tori to be incapacitated, I expect him to be here. I I think it's something that I could grow with and something that um I could take and add new responsibilities to to make it less of a figurehead position and more of an active duty position. Because I think it does come with a lot of prestige, and I I respect the title and more than just the title. Would love to add to it for what it's worth.
Thanks, Sam. With that, I mean, I support uh Ward's suggestion of moving John to the uh position of mayor pro tem. So we'll go around and just ask. Bill?
I'm happy to support Sam. I'm happy to support John. Um, I I guess I must choose one, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
You all need to make a motion.
Okay, well.
Not you personally, the council needs to make a motion.
Understood.
John, do you want mayor pro tem?
You know, it's not whether I want it or not. I don't think. It's a question of what does the community deserve? And I think if the mayor, the the person who would fill the seat if Tori is out of town should be a person with experience on this board. With that said, it's, this is not something I sought, but yes, I would be honored to serve as mayor pro tem.
Okay. Would you mind making a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move that um John Doyle be um elected as mayor pro tem by this city council for the next two years.
And I'll second it. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for uh appointing John Doyle as mayor pro tem, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Maritorie.
Uh, yes.
Another five oh.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Sam.
Yeah.
Sam, I know it's a disappointment.
Oh, that's fine.
Next, uh, next on our list is the Colorado Association of Ski Towns. Uh, I have been our uh voting member and our attendee with John as our alternate uh on the Colorado Association of Ski Towns. Uh, I know that my intention is to stay there. I've been doing a lot of work with Cast and really enjoy it, and for my last two years, I would uh really like to be attending those meetings as well. So for for my, for my role, I'd like to stay there.
I have really enjoyed being part of Cast as well. Um, and I would like to remain on Cast. I I think it's a very important board to be part of.
I've gone to a couple of Cast meetings. I've really enjoyed my time with those people and um reserve the um the right to crash the meetings, but not in an official capacity.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Ward.
I would mention on this one that the next Cast meeting in August is in Basalt. So we, i- it's a really great opportunity to notice any, for for all five of you to attend if you want without incurring additional costs for the community, and it'd be a great opportunity to be there in August.
Great idea.
Yeah, that is a great opportunity that they're in our, in our valley for that one, so that's great.
Do we need motions on all of these positions?
You, the council has two options. You can do motions on them this evening. The only other one I need a motion on tonight is APSHA. other one I need a motion on tonight is APSHA so that we have clarity for the next APSHA board meeting. The rest of them, if you can give me generally the straw poll of what names to put in, we will bring it back in a resolution for formal adoption at the April twenty-fifth meeting.
Okay, so with Cast, we're going to, uh, myself as a voting member and uh John is an alternate. And again, you guys are all all welcome. You definitely should attend a meeting. Uh, the Basalt one is a great opportunity and then we'll take it from there. Uh, and I should also say that as well, you know, these appointments um can be changed. Uh, we look to put these in place for really a year term is what we we start off with and we try for, but these are mutable, so um as we've reached that year, we'll also be revisiting these again. The Denver Rio Grande Western Covenant Enforcement Board is
I thought that was covered under Raft. I know I've served on that
Yeah.
uh, the last couple of years when we've gone through multiple hearings on this.
So as the voting Raft member, you took it over when Counselor Mullins stepped down from this role. And uh, it is one of those that is rather programmatic than policy in the work that they do. So it's really council's discretion whether you want that to be attached to the Raft a voting member, whether you want to delegate that to staff, how you, however you'd like to handle it, we're fine with.
Okay. In my experience, I think it takes a fair amount of time, but I would uh like to see either the Raft uh voting member or the alternate. And I'm the alternate now and I've been filling that position, so there, there is life and duties for alternates and so
Yeah.
I would like to see that stay with the um
Okay.
uh, council appointments for uh voting and alternate members.
All right, and we'll come back to that one then. Northwest Colorado Council of Governments, this is Northwest COG. Bill and Sam, Northwest COG is a regional uh organization. They provide some services and the like, uh, but they are just another one of those regional organizations that we work with and that we have a seat at the table with them as a, as an active member. You know, Bill, I I guess I should ask you, do you have interest in in committees or not at this time? Do you want to, you know, see how it goes? And like I said, it's mutable at any time, so um I don't know your interest. So I I I open it up to you.
I appreciate that. Uh, and thank you for the explanation of what Northwest COG is. Um, Sarah was very gracious and and uh explained all of these at great length for us. Uh, Sam and I happen to do this together, so I think we're well briefed on what each thing is.
Yeah.
My personal situation is that I feel that this is a big time commitment, being on council already. And so for this year, I'm not going to seek any of these committee appointments. You know, I support, I look forward to to hearing what is happening at all these, but I don't want to overcommit
Yeah, yeah.
and not be able to um you know, do what I'm capable of and what I'd like to do. And so for now, I'm going to sit all these out. No competition from me.
Okay.
You got three wee ones, don't you?
Sam, I I recommend this for you. I think that you should be our Northwest Colorado Council of Governments representative.
I appreciate that. I do have hesitation from hearing about it that it's something that could be delegated to city staff to save us, I guess, myself, time and get reports from it rather than have a representative, but I'm open to hearing why that's not a good idea.
Um, you know, this is a board that um seeks our input. And you, as an elected official, can speak with the voice from this council. Our staff members aren't necessarily in the same position as that. So on that side, that's why I support uh having a member there. But the other thing is, I think this is a really great opportunity for you to start working with number one, being a representative from the seat, but also working with other regional organizations and um it's just great. I I I you know, in my eight years uh as a council member, I was a Northwest COG uh delegate, I think, two, at two different periods. And I just uh it was very, it was very helpful for me. It was very helpful for me.
I think the NW COG would be very beneficial for an ambitious young man to uh to attend the meetings and become familiar with the different uh communities in Northwest Colorado.
I very much appreciate that. Is, can I get a look at what the schedule's like? Because as much as I know what it is, I don't know when they meet.
Yeah, yeah.
I know they also meet in places that are not necessarily close to Aspen.
That's true.
So that, that is a true concern of mine.
Yeah, if you're going to have time constraints and and the inability to make meetings, I, you know, I think they've gone remote on a bunch of them. But anyway, what we can do is we can start you off here. You can learn it, you can see it, and it's the same thing that happened with Skippy. You know, he went as, he started going and at first he did not feel the value in it. And by the end, he saw a lot of value in it. So it's a recommendation for you. You can take my recommendations or not.
Sure, as a temporary placeholder, I'm I'm happy to take it, but I will say I I might give it back uh if it's not what I'm seeking and I don't find the uh value to it. But hopefully I do find that value to it.
So for the council's clarity, this is one of them that must be passed by resolution.
All right.
So that, that is important for us to to have clarity about because it affects their quorum requirements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sam, are you ready to commit to that tonight or do you want to review the requirements and meeting locations and times?
Sorry, that was a bug. It's not, that was not meant towards you.
The bug's out already?
I know, it caught me off guard. Uh, the, the meetings are once a month and they, they take full days.
It's a Thursday.
It, it, and it
Once a month on a Thursday.
The meetings typically, I'm looking at Jen because she was the staff representative. She served in this role for the city of Glenwood Springs. Could you just real quickly? My recollection is, is that it's here at Con's Blanco County Mesa.
Primarily since, since COVID, they have had an online option, so you're able to attend online. And I think I just looked and it says that the location, like the onsite location is TBD, so I don't actually know if they are doing onsite locations. But yeah, they're, um, they generally start at like nine or ten. And then there's a break for lunch and then they come back for the economic development portion of it. And so it is the bulk of a day, once a month.
Once a month.
I definitely don't feel comfortable committing to that at this time. Because I'm in a transition period as far as like work and getting a new dog. And I don't um want to commit to a full day each month on a weekday especially to something like this right now. I I'm very happy to come back to it, but it does feel like if I said yes, it'd be on a whim and I don't feel like saying yes to say no, like after like one month.
All right, well, it'd be great if you even saw them. You know, it makes it difficult when two members of our five-member board are not going to accept other
Oh, I'll accept boards and commissions. I just don't like
This one doesn't work.
Yeah, th- this one, I mean, we're talking about a full day, not like just like a nightly meeting on a Thursday.
All right. Are you going to attend the next one that happens and see what happens there?
Uh, I can do that if that
Because what I'm saying is we can pass by resolution that you are our official attendee for the next meeting. That would be one step to just give them something.
Why don't I have a conversation with the executive director of Northwest COG and and send you all an email with more specificity um and and finding out what items need voted on in the next agenda? I think that would be helpful to to ensure that that whomever is attending is is adequately prepared for that. I I I'm just a little concerned at the moment right now that there's not agreement here and I don't want uh our relationship with Northwest COG to be revolving. There is some merits to some consistency in who attends and that relationship of voting, whether it's an elected or staff.
If it comes down to it, I'll take it on. So we have, we need a representative at Northwest COG.
Are we going to cycle back? Are we gonna?
We'll, we'll cycle back on that one. But
Circle, cycle.
That chair should not be locked open.
Yeah, thanks, John. Uh, the next one is the Aspen Chamber Resort Association. Uh, they request that the mayor is their, their member, so I will continue to uh attend the chamber meetings. The next one is Rudi Water and Power Authority. Sarah, would, did you uh identify this as a board that wasn't necessarily unelected?
If, if you have a desire, we can work with them to have that be a staff member. I would look at either our utilities director or our public works director to fulfill this role. Because primarily our interests up there uh come in two areas. One is the regional watershed and the protection of that. And those are two positions intimately that deal with that on, on a daily basis. Uh, and secondly, then, the, the um relationship to our um hydro uh generation facility at Rudi. Uh, but this, this is, this organization historically is a creature of the state, right? It was, it was explicitly created by the state um to evaluate regional water. Um, and I think that there's been some movement on whether uh what should the role of this organization be in the watershed going forward? So I I think that there's disagreement, quite frankly. The other members are the other municipalities and two of the counties um in the area.
John, you expressed some interest in this. This was Rachel.
Right.
I have a note here about the water summit that is coming up in uh May perhaps. Nonetheless, John, would you like to um start at Ruapa and see what you glean from your first meetings?
Yes.
Since you are interested in water.
Water's a huge interest.
So we're going to go ahead and put John on this um with the knowledge that it may change over.
Uh, and my recollection was that, Ward, you were the alternate. Who was the alternate?
For Ruapa?
Yeah.
I was.
You never had to go. She didn't miss a meeting.
I didn't even realize I was the alternate.
Was it Skippy? Okay.
I think so.
So just clarify for me if that should be an elected or if you want me to identify a staff member to be the alternate. And that doesn't have to happen tonight, um, but we will, we will leave a space blank for the alternate in the um resolution.
Okay, great. Uh, that brings us down to the core board. Uh, Ward is currently voting member and John is the alternate there.
Yeah, I've been on Core now, I think, close to six years. And um I feel comfortable where Core is now. We've gone through some stuff. I would like to see uh if John's willing to move out to be voting member and I think that this is something that would be a good fit for Sam as the alternate.
When are the meetings?
They are
Thursdays.
Also Thursdays.
Generally eight-thirty in the morning.
Three AMs?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And is it a, is it a first, second, third, or fourth Thursday?
Is it second?
Third, third, third days?
Second or third.
Raft is one and then the next one is
Raft is the second, so this would be the
The third, Thursday.
Yeah, it's once a month also, two and a half hours.
John, you have expressed how you appreciate Core, Core Board work and are you interested in uh moving up one seat?
Yes, I'll take that on.
And Sam, are you familiar with the Core Board, what they do and such?
Yeah.
And um, you know, I think that several of us have heard from you that, that environmental initiatives and and working in our community for that is something that's of interest to you. Are you interested in being the alternate for the Core Board?
Yes, I can sign on to that.
And I'd like just to interject here then. Until it comes to actual voting, there's really no difference between a uh a voting member and a uh alternate uh that all of these meetings are open to input from, from everybody and um so there's the only time that you would have to vote is if uh John wasn't there. So alternate positions are just as um impactful, I think, as uh the voting members.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. Sister Cities Board, uh, Ward has been acting as a liaison uh for that board. And um there's a lot of interaction that goes on with the mayor. Uh, this is not something that we need an actual delegate to. So our suggestion was to, for the mayor to continue my conversations and the work that I do with them anyway, without an official uh member up here, that way any one of us can get in touch with this board and attend the meetings as our liaison.
Yeah, I think like CCLC, this has been a non-voting member anyway and I've been uh uh active in it just because I love the program and I don't think there's anything to prevent city council members from attending meetings unless it's a notification.
Okay. CML, Policy Advisory Board. John, I think you're on this right now?
I am.
And what is the nature of it?
Well-laid form policy. Sarah can eat this faster than I could.
Sure, so the role of this body is to produce the annual, annual legislative agenda and policy agenda for CML. And they do that through a calling process from across the members of CML, which there's over three hundred municipal members in the state. The policy committee has a responsibility to digest that calling of policy position into a policy document that gets presented back to legislatures, uh, to the legislature as, as um priorities. And then when necessary, this board will provide direction on specific policy areas rather than the more general policy agenda that city council adopts as an example of the difference. The, the commitment for this one is what, twice to Denver? I think for in-person and then there's two that are optional uh online.
Yeah.
And they're one-day full meetings, uh typically on the front range just because of capacity. They generally don't happen up here in the mountains.
And John, did you want to stay with CML? Have you been enjoying that?
Yeah, I find that valuable work as well.
I don't think it's necessary for another, another, an alternate, but I am willing to do this one.
Then you're taking along a lot on here, you not overreaching?
We'll find out.
You feel comfortable with this added burden?
It is what it is. I'm, I'm adjusting. Uh, it, it initially felt like a larger workload when I took on the positions I took on two years ago, but you adjust.
That'll bring us to the Nordic Council.
That is something that I'm on right now that um we, we haven't talked about APSHA yet and uh I, I think that
That might be the tipping point.
A good fit for me. But with all the other boards that I'm on, I think I would be willing to give up Nordic Council.
And what's our involvement with Nordic Council, Sarah?
So I will turn to, to the gentleman to my left who was part of the founding of the Nordic Council, is my recollection. And so at the initial, this was about the planning of the hundred kilometers of routes throughout the connectivity of our open spaces here in the upper valley. I would say this group is much more a programmatic organization now rather than a policy-setting organization. I, I would like your, your take on that. John, but my, my take is that if you did not want to put an elected on this, we would work with the Nordic Council to to adjust their bylaws to allow us to place a staff member uh on this body.
Okay. Yeah, I, again, I would reluctantly give it up, but there's uh, I'm taking on a lot. They don't have, it doesn't seem, their biggest issue right now is trying to figure out snowmaking at the golf course, which is not um super complicated. I mean, it is complicated, but it, I don't think my participation is uh going to make or break it.
It was my recollection that the bylaws or the governing documents for the Nordic Council required a uh
City Council member.
official. I could be wrong. I didn't check that.
I, I would not let that limit the council, this, the, the, this city council. You've, you've, if you don't find this to be an effective use of your time right now with the other pressures you have from the community, we'll find a time to work with this independent body to say, "Look, this is what it's going to take for, for us right now is, is a staff." And, and, you know, we have three staff in every one of those Nordic Council meetings already for, for the program. So I think we have expertise in-house to fulfill this role well. If, but if you feel from a community perspective, it should If, but if you feel from a community perspective, it should be an elected, we're more than happy to support that too.
I served on this board for a couple of years and I would support a staff member filling in on this.
Well, John has expressed his interest in maintaining it if he can. So, John, if you want to continue with it, you can, and then you can let us know if this does not work for you.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure there will be conflicts with the other boards because they're mostly second and third week Thursdays and Wednesdays.
Well, yeah. All right. Picking County Board of Health, currently it's myself and John. I would like to maintain my role here. Public health is one of the most important items to me. So I would like to stick with this one.
I, as an alternate, I just started on the Board of Health and I think it's important and I have been enjoying it. But again, my plate's looking pretty full. And I would be happy to let someone else be the alternate on the Board of Health if they would like that.
And I would take it if it wasn't a conflict of interest for me right now, but soon it might not be.
How soon?
About July.
All right. All right, we will stay there and...
See how your conflict works out.
Yeah.
Berlin Game Housing Inc., Board of Directors. This is one.
So I used to be this person and then Councilmember Mizuro wanted to take on this role. This is very programmatic. This is about when do we replace roofs and downspouts and waterproofing? Who do we hire as the property management firm? And remember, we're one vote on this. There's, this is a separate entity that has representation from the music school and you have a community member you've appointed to this board as well. So we can operate it either way. But this is essentially who makes sure that seasonal housing product is in good shape and runs.
Sarah, do you feel it's necessary to have a representative on this board?
A rep, yes.
Yes, I don't feel strongly that it needs to be an elected. You know, a lot of our staff presence, whether we're appointed or not with this board, is fiduciary oversight and property maintenance oversight. Are we getting, is the work getting done to preserve the assets over time that needs to happen? That's where a lot of time is spent on this board. And it doesn't, I think it meets every other month, maybe quarterly? It's not a huge commitment, but we have staff who have to go to it no matter what.
If you don't mind my saying so, Bill, that sounds like something to be right up your alley.
Happy to consider in a year.
Fiduciary oversight, construction.
I think this is one that we would look for a non-elected to attend. Thank you. Rafta, Roaring Fork Transit Authority. Currently, I am the voting member and Ward is my alternate, but Ward does a lot of the heavy lifting and has for years. I am willing to stay in my role. And I am looking, because we have an APSHA appointment coming up, I'm looking to move Ward off of Rafta because I think that that would be just a lot.
I've enjoyed my six years that I've been on Rafta. I think it's a really important board. I've put a lot of time into it, but I think it's really important. Two years from now, I don't know what Tori's plans are for being on council if he's gonna run for election. I'm gonna be off the council. I think it's really important that we have succession planning for this board, that somebody that steps in two years from now is not coming in cold. So I, I would, I like serving on the board, but in the interest of city's representation on this very important board, I would step down and make room for perhaps Sam or somebody else to be the alternate. And again, I put a lot of time in on being an alternate, so that doesn't by any means handcuff you on what your commitment can be to Rafta.
Sam, we would love to have you back up this board.
Sounds good. When's it meet?
It's a Thursday, eight thirty AM.
Oh, doesn't that, well, that's the same time as the Core Board, right?
No, it's second and third Thursdays.
So different Thursdays, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to be schizophrenic, you can just go to...
I would say, yeah.
But it does...
Doesn't preclude him from being schizophrenic?
Yeah, I mean, as, yeah, as an alternate, like, I don't need to attend every meeting, but I should attend when I can.
Yeah, I mean, yes, yes, absolutely. You know, and a lot of this, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna see, like, you'll attend some of these meetings and you have, some of them, you're gonna be like, ah, I just don't have a place here. And others, you're gonna be like, oh, I want a place here.
No, that's good.
So why don't you start off with the alternate position there? Cool, thanks, man. It'd be nice to have you join me. That brings us down to our last one here, which is the APSHA Board. Skippy and Rachel were APSHA Board members for us. So we're filling both of the spots. Ward has expressed his desire for the voting membership in this first year.
Yeah, this is probably the most passionate I feel about any of the boards. I'm conflicted about Rafta, but I understand and I appreciate Sam's willingness to step in. But I feel pretty strongly I'd like to be the voting member for this next year and we can revisit in a year from now.
Thank you for that. My suggestion on this one is somewhat open, but I was hoping that John, just because of his experience and time in here, would take the alternate position on the APSHA Board at this time.
I'd be happy to.
Is that okay?
It's, when we come back to consider this next year, the two that I would be most interested in, and I, this is, who knows what will happen in a year's time, but the two that I would be most interested in are Rafta and APSHA. So if that gives any relief to John about, oh, maybe in a year, some of these...
Feel free to come back before the year is up. And Bill, I thought Rafta was a perfect fit for you because of your comments and beliefs on transportation, so...
I'm hopeful I can contribute, but I don't want to bite off more than I can chew and do everyone a disservice, so...
And these are all, these are public meetings, so there's nothing that says you can't attend.
And you need a motion for this one?
Yes, because there's a meeting next Wednesday.
I will make a motion then for the appointment of Ward Howenstein as the voting member and John Doyle as the alternate member to APSHA Board.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion is seconded for the discussion. Could we have a roll call vote for the appointment of Ward as a voting member and John as the alternate on APSHA, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
May I move that we adjourn?
So quickly, I like it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Sarah, did you have any input here? Was there something missing?
I'm seeking clarity about Northwest COG. We will leave it blank in the resolution for you to fill in on the 25th.
Fair enough.
You said you were gonna reach out to John and...
Yeah, I will provide information, but I also had to note that John was contemplating being a, this John was, talking about John Stadney, that's the name of the executive director of the Northwest COG. I will, I will, I have you down as a maybe.
Okay.
You can, John and I, this John and I can discuss that. If it relieves the load from John, this John, we'll circle back on the twenty...
Twenty what? Twenty four?
Next meeting.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth. Okay. All right, guys, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Could we have a roll call vote for adjournment, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you grassroots, we appreciate you. Sam and Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you, David News, we appreciate you.
Yeah.
Apps are up one zero.